It is now 5:01. September eighteen, twenty eighteen. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. The Victorville Water District and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Good afternoon.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
May we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. And just for the record, I assume when you opened the meeting, you opened both the special meeting as well as the regular meeting. On the regular meeting, we actually do not have any closed session items at this time. However, in connection with the call of the special closed session meeting, we do have closed session and it is existing litigation pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D one. Item A is under the City Council authority. Item B is under the Airport Authority. The case name and case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action with respect to those closed sessions, I will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Thank you. We will now recess to our special closed session meeting.
We do need to ask for public comment, just to see if there's any public comment.
I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to address the council at this time. Therefore, we will be recessing to our special closed session meeting. Oh, there it goes. Clock seventeen. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. The Victorville Water District. And the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Good evening.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had two items tonight. They were actually on the special meeting notice and they were both existing litigation pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D one. One was on behalf, item A was on behalf of the City Council. Item B on behalf of the Airport Authority. The case name and the case numbers are fully set forth on the agenda. There is reportable action with respect to both matters. The reportable action is the council on a four one vote with Councilmember Gomez voting no, agreed to file a writ with the appellate court, fourth district, with respect to the lower court's denial of the motion for summary judgment. That's the only reportable action.
Thank you. We will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Father Pat Travers of Holy Innocence Catholic Church. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by...
Lieutenant Wickham?
Lieutenant Wickham?
Wickham.
Wickham. Very good. Okay, please stand.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Lord, we thank you for this city council and their aspirations to be involved in the useful work and responsibilities they have undertaken in governing our city. Last week, we honored the victims of nine eleven, of Dave Infamy in our generation. We ask you, Lord, to keep this council ever vigilant on the sacrifices so many and to honor the victims of nine eleven with humility and courage, as they honored us with true humility and found their courage in the love they had for our nation, their families, and our fellow man. Given in mind why we'll please you first in honor of the sacrifices so many, help our council find the ability to work together in harmony and not to turn honest disagreement into their own private agenda. Give this council peace in their lives and help them find joy in the tasks set before them. Instill a need for justice and honesty, always remembering to respect the positions they hold and the constituents they represent. We thank you for the freedom to embrace you here in this public forum and ask for your blessings upon us all. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance? Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do not have any proclamations. We do have a presentation. Recent actions to combat illegal dumping, including Dump Right V V Public Awareness Campaign. And that will be presented by Sue.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just to tee things up, and we've got three staff members that will pitch the presentation. But I think most importantly, this was our opportunity as staff to come back with, come back to you with information that you'd previously asked for relating to some of our public awareness efforts relating to solid waste programs, new Dump It Right program. And that's what we're calling it, is Dump It Right Victorville. And when we went through the solid rate study process, at that time, as we were analyzing the numbers and the cost of service, we were also dealing with a lot of citizen complaints about illegal dumping throughout the community. And I'm not a hundred percent convinced that it's totally resolved or eradicated, but certainly one of the things that was believed by us back then was that there should be very little reason to dump illegally, especially considering the number of services that we have, particularly at our satellite recycling center and hazmat centers, to where for no cost, those trash, that trash can be discharged. So there's really no reason, or there was no reason in our minds, why that should be occurring. And certainly with that philosophy in mind, there was a belief that a continued public awareness, increased outreach to the community to just better make them aware of the programs available. So Sue Jones, our public information officer, led the effort in developing the campaign, which is hashtag Dump It Right Victorville. We've actually done some short video clips to serve as promotional that hit external audiences through social outreach, including Facebook, but then also print and media buys. So with that, staff, and I think Sue is probably going to be the start of the presentation. She wanted to, with the team, talk about the campaign so you're aware of it and not surprised by it when you see it out in the community.
Hey Keith, just a question. As you know, this weekend, I sent you a text about an illegal dump that I had observed and got out and cleaned it up on Monday. My question is, is it important for people in the community when they see illegal, haul in and report them?
It absolutely is. And that's one of the things that we're really trying to transition towards is embracing the complaint. In fact, the rollout of our new website was designed with that in mind, embrace the complaint. So we've got some portals on there where even if you don't know where to send the complaint, we've made it easier for you to just, we've got some drop down menus to make it easier so that in the background, we can get the complaint to the right location. But whether it's online, using the website, or it's a phone call, or a text message, as I'm receiving them, I'm giving them the right staff member right away. In that particular case, it came in on a Sunday, so we didn't have a crew on Sunday, but first thing we were doing, work order on Monday morning, we were out there. So, and that's being made, in this particular case, we're able to do that a lot easier now that we have the solid waste program properly being funded with the new rate study. So today was an opportunity to kind of share with you some of the immediate results and benefits that we're getting from that.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protown Councilmembers. As Mr. Metzler indicated, we're here to present and provide you some information on our new efforts. I'll start with the enforcement efforts. As Mr. Metzler indicated, we often get a lot of complaints, a lot of leads, a lot of information pertaining to illegal dump sites that have been there for a bit, or illegal dumpers, the people that are willing to report illicit activity. Clearly, our dumping problems impact our desert areas, our commercial areas, our residential areas, impacting the quality of life issues. And the impacts are clear. The residential communities are impacted again by the growing amount of trash and impacting property values perhaps as well. Local businesses obviously are impacted by the added amount of operation constraints and perhaps the impacts to their consumers, and of course, the impacts to the city's appeal in general. We have a presentation, and so I'll go through the enforcement efforts that we've highlighted. Our primary efforts, of course, was to immediately reduce trash and blight through enforcement efforts, through quickly responding to complaints, through quickly investigating the site and quickly getting it to our cleanup team. We've increased the enforcement presence and patrols. As you're aware, the code enforcement division also now works seven days a week, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. We've extended our hours from ten thirty to eight thirty to primarily make our presence a lot more visible during peak hours in the city. And of course, we've also increased, as Mr. Metzler indicated, the encouragement of residents to report and participate, making that information much easier to transfer from the resident to us and much quicker to transfer from us to our abatement team. Just some brief statistics on the trash related cases in the last twelve months, we've had approximately seven hundred and eight actionable cases. And just in the last seventy-five days, which is where most of our efforts recently have grown and emphasized and improved, we had about one hundred and thirty-three cases just So notable process changes as far as code enforcement, again, is the increase in code enforcement coverage, the increased participation with specialized patrols from our police department to address the growing dump piles in our desert, the increased collaboration with our cleanup team in developing improved procedural and work orders processes, which Janelle will expand on. And of course, making the, adding the convenience of a public reporting. That results into more efficient and effective trash removal, faster investigation, and increased reports again from our community members. And Janelle Davidson will provide some more information on our cleanup and abatement programs.
Thank you. Good evening. Just as a recap, on the February report, we provided information on a number of existing programs and events that the city has offered for quite some time, and those are geared toward the prevention and the abatement of illegal dumping. Flyers were provided to the city council. Those are also available at our customer service lobby and the community services counter, as well as the city's website. Those include programs such as free dump days, neighborhood cleanups, citywide community cleanup events, and more importantly, bulky item pickup that can be scheduled, as well as free drop off sites. So we have three drop off sites throughout the city. The most conveniently located is our recycling drop off center that is located on Anacapa Road. You can turn in right off of Amerigosa and drive through. There's somebody there to help you unload any items you bring. And you can exit right onto Palmdale Road. It's nice and easy. That is open six days a week. We also have our materials recovery center that's out near the landfill off of Stoddard Wells Rowne. That's open five days a week. And we have our household hazardous waste collection center that is open two days a week. That's off of Love's Lane behind the fairgrounds. We do have a couple of updates to our programs. The first being that the illegal dump abatement crews were transferred to community services in July. That was really aimed at the fact that not all cleanup activities are geared toward enforcement cases. There is citywide illegal dumping that community services has staff out in the field who can help address those problems very efficiently. However, we've continued to coordinate closely with code enforcement. As Mr. Duran mentioned, currently, we have a process in place whereby code enforcement officers can send us information related to code enforcement cases that require assistance from these crews. And just to give you a picture of activity outside of enforcement, the table provided on this slide shows that we are approaching our tonnage collected for 2017, and we're only in the month of August. So we're on track there. We've already surpassed the number of tires collected from 2017. While these figures are separate from code enforcement, again, just through the month of August, I know we had more than one hundred and twenty-three tons of waste collected on enforcement activity as well. Also, back in April, we expanded the services available at our recycling drop off center. We added bulky item pickup. So now residents can go to our recycling drop off center and take up to five items and drop those without even having to schedule it. Since April, we've collected nearly seventeen hundred items weighing almost forty-nine tons. And it's increased the number of visitors to our center by nearly double our average monthly visitors from last year. So we're always, we have a lot, a number of programs. We're always trying to make improvements. And as part of those improvements, we worked with our public information officer, Sue Jones, who I will hand things over to, to tell you about our new campaign.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to share some information with you about our new public awareness campaign. The goals for the campaign were pretty simple. Create awareness for the city's disposal services, drive people to the city's new website to learn about these services, and then ultimately change behavior by offering alternatives to illegal dumping. We wanted to, when our committee got together, it was made up of folks from our community services, our code enforcement, and myself. We wanted to make sure that this effort was very targeted for greatest impact. And we talked about how could we make the greatest impact? And we decided to focus on what we ultimately called the lone dumper, or the people that individually just go out and like to throw things in the desert for whatever reason. We also wanted to increase awareness for our bulky item pickup. It's a service that's available free for any single family residence that has curbside trash service. And we think it's a service that maybe not enough people knew about and could take advantage of, so that was another target. And the third target was what we ultimately deemed the irresponsible junk callers. This is a buyer beware message basically to our public. We wanted the community to understand that there are some irresponsible junk callers out there. Sadly, these are people that are hired, people think that they're going to do the right thing, and in the end, throw the items out in the desert. So that was our third target, was the irresponsible junk callers. We branded our campaign hashtag Dump It Right V V. The primary messages are dumping trash in the desert is not only illegal, it's just plain wrong. And with all of the city's free services, the free disposal services we have, it's just too easy to dispose of your unwanted items the right way. And what we decided to have everything branded is Keep Victorville Clean and Dump It Right V V. And we drove people to our website where they can learn more at victorvilleca.gov/dumpitrightvv. We decided to do a month-long campaign. It started in September. It'll trick over into October. In the initial rollout, we combined a lot of different communication vehicles, radio, digital, social, bus shelter advertising, et cetera. We tried to be very targeted with the messaging into those communication vehicles. We used a new technology. It's a digital technology called geo fencing. I'll just call that out because it's an experiment for me. And basically, if anyone travels into, within a couple mile area of five very known dump sites in our area, a push of a digital ad will be pushed onto their smartphone. And it'll basically be like you see here, don't be this guy, don't dump in the, you know, don't dump in the desert, dump it the right way, with our contact information. Now, I wanted to go into just showing you some of the promotions that we put together. This is a sample digital ad. This one is specifically targeting the messaging about don't hire irresponsible junk callers. And this is used as banner ads on websites. We're using it on social media, et cetera. And we're also going to put some of these into posters. And this is a sample video that we put together. This is specifically about our bulky item pickup, and I'll play this for you now. This is a sample, what we called an animated short. This one also is focused on just beneficial services. One thing I should say too is these are pretty quick, but when they're displayed on social media, they'll just repeat. So if you don't catch the phone number, you'll see it again. And this is, I'm going to play for you a sample radio ad that we produced, that it's now playing on radio.
Why are we stopping?
Oh, I have some tires I need to get rid of.
Please tell me you aren't planning to dump them right here in the desert.
What's wrong with that?
It's illegal, and it's just plain wrong to throw trash in the desert.
Yeah, but what should I do with these tires?
Take them to Victorville's recycling drop off center. It's free.
It's free? I didn't realize that.
Yep, it's just too easy to dump it, right? If you go to the City of Victorville website, you can find out how to dispose of all kinds of trash like mattresses, old furniture, e-waste, and more.
Visit victorvilleca.gov/dumpitrightvv. Keep Victorville clean and dump it right.
This is a sample bus shelter ad. We actually purchased six bus shelters throughout the city, and we did one for each of the target areas that I told you about. Well, times two. One in English, one in Spanish, for each. And this is, just in summation, we wanted to share with you some of the next steps, some things that we're still having the works and that you'll be seeing implemented shortly. In the secondary rollout for the public awareness campaign, we're going to be putting posters in our home improvement stores. Mr. Duran went to each of the Home Depots and Lowe's and spoke with them, and they were willing to let us put some posters in their storefronts. And then the stop illegal dumping picture that you see there, that's going to be turned into stickers that are going to be put on city vehicles. So when city vehicles are driving throughout the city, they'll continue to promote the Dump It Right V V campaign. And then we're also going to be able to brand the Dump It Right V V at our community events, such as Fall Festival and other community outreach efforts.
We also have two operational changes budgeted as part of the current fiscal year. That includes the addition of a senior maintenance worker who will serve as the lead for our two existing illegal dump abatement crews, and also as the primary operator for the grapple truck that we will be purchasing to handle more efficient loading of large items or larger dump sites.
And lastly, the pilot project for electronic reporting and work orders. It's intended to expedite the cleanup. It's intended to reduce the repeat of dumping through expedited cleanups. We've seen that the quicker we get there and abate the problem, the less frequency there will be to repeat that, especially for those people looking for an opportunity. So we'll keep working on that.
Thank you. That was excellent. Great information. Now we will continue on. They see...
I have one question.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
The flyers, these are going to go on the water bills? Everyone will have no excuse for not seeing them.
Yeah, actually, environmental programs did put those in as a bill insert in the water bills this month, and then we'll also have them on display in City Hall. And just so everyone here knows, I was a little late to the meeting. I was rushing, but there are some out there on the display when you come in, where you would pick up a public comment card. I put a stack of those flyers there as well.
Oh, thank you. Very good. Other questions? This evening, we do, let's see, where am I? We do not have any revisions to the agenda this evening. We do not have any appeal hearings. So we will be moving on to public hearings. And item B one, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against granting a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Green Medical Transportation, Inc., for a non-emergency medical transportation business. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt resolution number eighteen dash zero seven nine at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. Are there any questions, of staff, by council members?
I have a question. Is this a new company or expansion of an existing company?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's my understanding that this is a new individual serving in the capacity of this business. And accordingly, once this item, now that we've received the application and proof of insurance, this item is considered for the council and then would actually apply for a business license. So my belief is that it's a new business because it doesn't have a business license.
At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards, so I close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
I move approval of this item in granting the certificate of public convenience and necessity to Green Medical Transportation, Inc.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, item C one through C ten can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item C two.
C two, okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to pull C two, C seven, C eight, and C ten.
I'm sorry, which ones?
Two.
C?
C two, C seven, C eight, and C ten.
Already asked to pull C two.
Oh, I thought you said C three, so I'll correct that. It's C three then.
Madam Mayor, move...
Madam Mayor, move the balance of the consent calendar.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously?
Madam Mayor, a key question for you on C2. Thought I was fairly familiar with VMS. Results seem to say loss, an operational loss? You got a for this question?
Yeah, and for this particular item, well, to answer the first part of the question, the Boulder Canyon Project is Hoover Dam, and recently, probably within the last year, we entered into a contract to be a part of the supply of energy. We were entitled through Congressional Act as a publicly-owned utility to participate in the generation of power. We get a very small amount of power, and of course, that gets transferred into the grid, and then we have a relationship with the City of Corona to actually schedule the delivery. So in fact, to answer the question, in this particular quarter, did operate at a loss. The fourth quarter, I believe it is, operated cash positive. Our business model, over the course of four quarters or one year, actually projects cash positive. So it's my belief that in that particular quarter, January through March, the market worked against us in terms of basically the sale of those electrons onto the grid. We actually don't take delivery of the electrons. We're entitled to them, and market prices worked in a direction different than what we actually purchase them for.
The amount of money compared to what we do in VMS, are we bringing electricity from that project?
From that project into the grid, and then it gets, we're responsible for making the initial purchase, and then it gets resold because we don't accept the delivery of those.
Ever expect it'll get to be a significant?
It's not going to be a significant amount, and it's not going to be a significant net revenue, but we do project net revenue out of that, that small business model.
My comment for that one, C2, was to please contextualize the results with the detailed messaging for the benefit of the public.
So for the benefit of the public, to summarize these two operating reports, we really put these items on the agenda as informational as to the sale and demand of electricity and also natural gas at both the Foxborough Industrial Park and Southern California Logistics Airport, which are the two locations where we provide those utility services. So in the case of both reports, when it comes to usage, it measures the sale of megawatt-hours in very basically in Quarter 3 and in Quarter 4. It looked like there was a slight year-over-year increase. And it also shows a individual and collective demand at both interconnects for those two locations.
Thank you. For Item C3, my comments and questions are as follows. I disagree with the granting any extension of purchasing power to any city manager who participates in using his discretion to using public funds in imprudent manners and uses the discretion of any personal ideologies to further any partisan activities. I have a request. I'm requesting that council, which is the body here, to receive quarterly reports in writing to demonstrate how the city manager has exercised the stewardship of the dollars of the public that has been on an ongoing agenda. That's what I'm seeking. And how will staff be proceeding with this request? So I'm waiting for a response because this is usually what I get.
Is that a question of me or the council? Because I think you're asking for direction from the council as to whether or not you're going to get quarterly reports.
Well...
My belief is that through the commercial demand reports that we provide, you certainly get a listing of all of the expenditures made. If there's something more that we're not providing to the council, certainly the council can direct staff, and we can try to provide perhaps what you're looking for. But maybe speaking to this item, more specifically, this item is dealing with the second reading of an ordinance that was discussed at the last council meeting, which does alter the purchasing authority for the city manager and, in very general circumstances, changes the purchasing authority for general services from $25,000 to $50,000. But what wasn't covered last time that may be helpful to know for the benefit of the public is even while it's increasing the purchasing authority for general purchases, there are a number of areas where we actually decreased and actually reduced the purchasing authority, particularly on change orders involving public works construction projects. So with that being said, unless there's a specific direction that the council is seeking different from this item, this item is really just presented for second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So my request was for city staff to provide certain documentations, but since you're throwing it back to the council, I'm going to make it a motion publicly so that if we can receive these individual documents to show a pattern of how our city manager's discretion is being used, that's going to be a motion since staff denied to approve of that, so it's being made public right now. So I need a second if it's going to go anywhere else.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
So the second thing is that the city manager uses discretionary powers to pay for attorney-recall efforts since the city clerk is still under mentorship in regards to many official duties as a city clerk?
Let me just go a little slower because I do want to understand.
Oh, okay. So did the city manager use his discretionary powers to pay for an attorney for the recall efforts since the city clerk is still under mentorship to many official duties as the city clerk? What is the full list of exceptions that the city manager cannot change orders and are making any contract amendments? So this is calling out if it's under $50,000 that we're paying for a recall effort with public funds. I want to make sure that's placed on the record because I know that's what we've been doing, and I don't want anything to go underneath or be pulled under the rug of anyone. That's why my questions are being asked in the manner that they're being asked today.
So to answer the question, as I understand it, to be under the context of something done under the city manager's purchasing authority, directly answering the question of whether or not we've retained a firm to support the recall effort, the answer is no. I think what you believe is related to the recall effort that is not related to the recall effort is having retained professional advisory services for the elections process to help navigate not only the election but the upcoming recall so that we can administer properly in accordance with law and so that we don't make any errors as we move forward in trying to facilitate the election process.
Okay, so again, I'll repeat in my words since it looks like there's a consensus of what we just heard and I understood. So my question was, is did the city manager use his discretionary power to pay for attorney-recall efforts since the city clerk is still under mentorship in regards to many official duties as the city clerk? So that just basically answered my question. So I appreciate the fact that you were honest and genuine about this because this has been a runaround, me asking for records.
The answer to your specific question is no.
So then, you didn't hire anyone for advisory?
Time is up.
Anything, right?
That's not what you just asked.
That's what I did ask.
Time is up.
I did ask, and it's for the record. Thank you. So for C7, I'm sorry. For C7, does the general public receive the detailed versions of the commercial demand schedules and the approved payroll demand schedules? Yes or no?
Say your question again. I'm sorry.
Yes. Is the general public receiving the detailed version of the commercial demand schedules and the approved payroll demand schedules?
I would say that they're receiving it to the extent that they're downloading the same document that all council members are downloading in the format that's provided here in the agenda. If the council so desires to provide a different format or additional information, direct us to do so, and we'll be glad to do it.
I'd like to put it on record that the entire council gets a very vague, and I'm the only one that gets a detailed version, and I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. Thank you. For C8, would you please review the public who sits on the Grants Review Committee with approximate time lengths that they've been sitting? That's with the caper or caper. Reviews Committee?
I believe the question is who, which council members currently saw sit on the Grants Committee and how long their tenure has been on that committee? Do I understand your question correctly?
I did.
Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Negretti sat on the last, the current committee, and I'm going off of memory, but I have provided this to you in an email in written format. I believe they've sat on it for three to four years.
Thank you. And then, please, for the benefit of the public, would you be able to articulate how the caper is another way to civically engage the community with their opinions and concerns, along with any clearinghouse dates where the public has time to comment on issues? And does staff have any knowledge of CDBGDR?
To answer the first part of the question, to detail to the public how the caper process, the report that is on the agenda tonight, allows them to participate in the CDBG process. The caper is the end-of-the-year reporting for CDBG and home activities. The document has been circulated for the required time period. It's noticed on the Internet, and of course, it's on the agenda now. So the public has the opportunity to make any comments about the report, as well as throughout the whole CDBG annual cycle. Starting in November, there's a series of workshops, surveys, stakeholder meetings that start the public's participation in the annual CDBG process multiple times throughout the year. The CDBG items come before the council in a public forum. So there are many opportunities, and this is another opportunity for the public to see how the federal grants that are awarded to the city primarily to serve low-to-moderate-income persons are being used in the City of Victorville. I'm sorry, the second part of your question?
No, that's, you've cleared it. It was just, well, CDBGDR. So to staff, I'm requesting a meeting with Scott Webb to inquire about the item before the next agenda item that's on the general meeting. Please respond to how you will be proceeding with this request. Unfortunately, because I've been denied to be able to inquire with staff and department heads by any, anything that I would like to inquire with the discretion of the city manager against his desire to allow me to ask questions. Regardless of municipal code, I've been unable to ask questions. So I'm asking publicly if I'm able to meet with Scott Webb in terms of this agenda item. How will staff be proceeding with this request?
Unless directed differently by the majority of the city council, I've made a direction, and staff is following that direction, that all of your communications largely to you having contributed to what's believed to be a hostile work environment by threatening employees, I've chosen to try to protect the employees by limiting your interactions with them. So accordingly, I will deny the request and will continue to deny the request. And unless directed differently from the council, that's how we will proceed.
Okay, so for the record, I'd like to state that as a representative for the City of Victorville, I am being denied direct access of inquiry based on the municipal code, based on your discretion, Mr. Metzler, to be able to make adequate decisions on the city to vote. And I'm not going to be rubber-stapping any of this information. So without me having to have a lot of the information that I've inquired in the past and have done it publicly, I'm going to say that you are violating the municipal code and using your discretion as doing that. I just like to keep that for the record so I can't vote for a lot of items unless I have certain questions. And this one is one in particular. Other ones, I don't have too many questions, but thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do believe I have an obligation to do my best to protect staff of your organization. As it relates to the suggestion by Ms. Gomez that she's been denied information, that is a lie. I've responded to all of the emails that are sent to me. I provide as much information, and I try to provide the information as timely as possible. The voluminous nature of them has gotten to the point where I may respond a little bit more slowly than when I first took over this role, but I do make it a point to respond to every communication that is received by Ms. Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. All this is in writing and email format. Anybody is welcome to request through the Public Information Act our information. So thank you for calling me a liar, but it's all in writing, so I'm going to have to revert and say that's not the case. It's in writing. So I have that. That's why I'm coming in public now, and no need to hide it anymore. Thank you. No further questions on C8. For C10, which is the last one, what is the history of the flooding for this specific project? And are there any other areas in the city that we are aware of, and how have we addressed those areas?
I believe I can answer that question. There has been some flooding at the intersection of Silica and industrial in the past. It's actually overflowed onto our lead track that feed into the industrial sites. So this project was to mitigate that flooding issue and to prevent any maintenance problems we would have in the future. As far as other flooding in the city, I cannot answer that in detail. We'd have to provide that information at a later time. There have been, over the years, flooding in various locations throughout the city, and we have addressed some of those, but it's limited to our resources and our funding.
Thank you. I'm going to publicly state on the record that in order for me to be able to represent the City of Victorville residents and to be able to cast my votes, being denied the information that I have been denied so far, I'm not going to be able to make various decisions that concern any natural or emergency disasters. So I'd like to make sure that's on the record, and I will continue to ask for one-on-one with access of the city manager to sit in so that I can have my questions answered in regards to flooding and any information that you were not able to provide at this moment. Mr. Gangler, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if there's no further comments or questions, move approval of those second. Whatever items were left out of the original approval.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy.
For the record, I think you should name them. There's two, three, seven?
C2, C3, C7, C8, and C10.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, they're very distinct. Not all of them are no's for me. So I don't know if you want to break it down, but not all of them are the same one for me as they are for the rest of the council.
You can let me know which ones are no, and I'll make that for the record.
Item C8 is a no. Item C7 is yes. Item C10 is yes.
C3?
And item C3 is no.
And what's your vote on C2?
C2 is just a comment, yes.
So C3 and C8 are no's?
C3 and C8 are no's.
The motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously with the exception of Councilmember Gomez voting no on Items C3 and C8.
Now, we move on to written communications. Item D1, establishing new wastewater treatment operations, accounts, and approving increased revenues and expenditures for the industrial. revenues and expenditures for the industrial wastewater pretreatment program. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number VWD-18-011 to amend the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget establishing new wastewater pretreatment operations, accounts, and approving increased revenues and expenditures of $26,274 for the industrial wastewater pretreatment program.
Thank you. Are there any questions by councilmembers of staff?
Yes, I have questions for item D1.
Move approval of the item.
Second.
So let me ask my questions, or you want to proceed?
Go ahead.
So for item D1, for the benefit of the public, please provide any contextualization for the item with this, specifically contextualized with VVWRA fees. The second question is, comment with question is, it worries me that an item that we have put across requires appropriations is not a public hearing, but instead just a written item. Are there any schedule of fees related to this item? I don't see them. And how did staff come about with the evidence to ask for appropriations of the monies? And whose priorities are reflected in this recommendation? What is the line item budget outlays for the 2017-2018? And what was the incrementalism that was, that's going to be taking place on this budgetary 2018-2019 budget year?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item is dealing particularly with budget appropriation, both revenues and expenditures, in relating to the city's industrial wastewater pretreatment ordinance, which was approved back in June of 2019. And effectively, what's happening is because the adoption of the pretreatment ordinance occurred on that date, which ironically was the same date as the budget, it was inadvertently not included in the budget at that time. But as the ordinance was adopted for this program, the city is now able to collect revenues to offset the expenditures to help ensure compliance directly related to the city's Southern California Logistics Airport industrial wastewater treatment plant. So answering the question as to its relationship with the VVWA, this does not have a relationship to VVWA. It's more directly related to our own wastewater treatment plant, and only the industrial wastewater users connected to that. As to the line items, I think the line items are answered more specifically on page one of the staff report. That's page 179 of your agenda, where it identifies revenue and expenditure accounts. And as to the public hearing part of it, that was actually conducted on June 19th and approved by this council, where there was an accompanying cost of service study related to that, and so the public hearing process has been satisfied. Whose priorities? I think, I guess the best way to answer that is that these are the priorities of the EPA. We're obligated to have pre-treatment program in place consistent with local ordinance, so we're just following, following the code and the law.
And so, and did you tell me what the percentage of incrementalism was between 2017 and 18 budget fiscal year and this year?
Incrementalism, I'm not, hmm.
Incrementalism is a concept where you look at your prior budget, and then you look at your coming budget, and you look at the increase of the appropriation. So I'm looking for a percentage of incrementalism in that regard.
So understanding that, it sounds like it's just the year-over-year difference between years, and the fact that this was approved just this year in June of 2018. Last year, there was no revenues or expenditures generated because the program didn't exist, so this is year one to which you're generating revenues and expenditures. So using the term incrementalism, I would say zero.
I don't know if I can say zero when it's $26,000, but thank you for that clarification. Lastly, it's my understanding that we're in current negotiation settlements with VVWA that could potentially deal with anticipated litigation if we do not arbitrate to satisfaction of the city of Victorville, and that's how I wanted the contextualization to come across. That's what I've been seeing, sitting in the VVWA meetings, and also looking at our IWWTP. Seems that we are incrementing taxpayer usage money to be able to sustain our IWWTP. Thank you.
What does this have to do with VVWA?
Nothing. Absolutely nothing. Nothing at all.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, can we have a motion?
We do have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no.
Are there any other questions? Item D2, award of contract for the police station flooring replacement project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council award a contract to Carpet Club Incorporated in the amount of $79,852.81 for the police station flooring replacement project.
Thank you. Questions by councilmembers of staff?
I have a question in regards to this. Is this building a municipal building, or is this building belonging to the county of San Bernardino?
It's a city facility.
Thank you. No further questions.
Madam Mayor, have a quick comment?
Yes.
I'd like to thank city staff for working this issue. Throughout the city, we have various facilities that from time to time need renovating, and just unfortunately, wear and tear on our facilities is something that you just can't get away from. But, you know, this brings into focus something that's very important. Obviously, when you have some of the great public safety folks that we have serving this community, any of these things that we can do to improve the facilities for our great professionals is something that I would always encourage on an annual basis, and even if it's small improvements, here we're talking about flooring, but there's other opportunities for improvements elsewhere. And certainly, I'd be available to help volunteer in the future for some of these projects that, I know that we have a lot of great talent out there. We can pull together, make some, some real improvements. So anyway, great job, and I hope this is just the beginning of more projects like this. Thanks.
Thank you. I do have one speaker card. Alejandra?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Well, I have a question and a comment. Well, how big is the police department? Seventy-nine? How can you guys give me the square footage? And how much are we going to pay for a square footage? Because wow, $80,000 for changing the flooring for the police department? That seems really, really expensive. And don't take me wrong, I do appreciate it, and they do a wonderful job, and we need them. But, so it's like changing the floor for how many houses? The price value of the regular house in Victorville is what? Twenty-two thousand to three fifty thousand? And so, you need eighty thousand to change the floor? I think that price is very, very expensive, and I want to know, where can I see the footage of the police department? And also, I would like to know if you guys get another offers from other companies to compare? Because we are going to pay eighty thousand dollars for the floor, come on. At least, I think that you guys should have two, three, four bids, and please tell me, if you want later, tell me the square footage, and how much exactly we're going to pay for square footage. Thank you.
Madam? Madam Mayor, as we're mentioning, I think that we did get three bids, as we always do, for a project of this size. The flooring in a police department isn't like the flooring in our home, when you consider all the things that a police department has to go through, handling folks, activity to just replace floors in a house, and believe me, this strike me as a high price at all. The staff just read the second paragraph of page two, so that this clarifies up. Or I will.
Matt?
Your time, sir.
Project's scope consists of installing approximately 8,000 square feet of rigid core waterproof flooring in high-traffic areas at the station. These areas include the runway area, hallways, briefing rooms, on and on and on, and locker rooms, and so on and so on and so on. Additionally, approximately 2,750 square foot of flooring in the gang unit, detective unit, conference room, so on. Carpet tiles are similar to those installed in City Hall, which can be changed individually. If something happens to them, while flooring replacements covering on the project will include a new four-inch cold basement, the three people who bid, Carpet Club, Inc., DNA Flooring, and Wally Carpet and Tile. It's all in the staff report, and all the council have that information. Copy of it if you'd like. Okay.
Yes, I have another question. So we had a public comment. I would like staff to either make an appointment or approach her to be able to give her what her questions are. She asked, what was the square footage? We don't have that in our council reports. She asked for probably the footage, or maybe, I don't know, you guys are doing a walkthrough? I mean, this is public funds. And what goes into the flooring costs for eighty-five thousand? I know Mr. Cox is reading a couple of them. But how much of the facility's operation budget do we have? And is that a specific budget that we're taking from? Or can we do GF, which is a general fund, or any other enterprise or types of funds? And why choose this one versus any other? Regardless, if someone could make sure that our public, when they ask questions, get either a card or approach, so they don't feel like they're ignored, regardless of who it may be, I think that's something that would be standard practice for us, so that you guys don't feel ignored.
I think all that information's in the staff report. All you got to do is read it.
It's not.
It's there. Eight thousand square foot.
Madam Mayor, move approval of item D2.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a further comment. For those of you that don't know our reports, what you can do is give Heidi your email, and she will add you as the interested party, and you can start to begin to receive these on your email, and you'll get directions on how to access them online. I know a lot of people don't know that you can access this online, or give Heidi Roach your email, and she will start every seventy-two hours beforehand giving them to you when city council gets them. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item D3.
I need a vote. Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we move on to item D3, adopting the Measure I five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2018, 2019 through 2022 and slash 2023. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt Resolution Number 18-080, adopting the Measure I five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2018, 2019, fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Thank you. Questions of councilmembers, of staff, by councilmembers?
I have a question. I do have a comment on the last page. I was trying my best to read this for the projects, and I could not, and I believe, somewhere, I hope that we'll get a blow-up of that, because this is for five years, and I'm sure the council or the public will want to refer to it at some time or other.
We can have that delivered to your box.
Okay, as, you know, we're, I want to follow the rules correctly here. I've been told whenever I make a request of staff, we need the entire council. So, Mr. Cox, I mean, I don't see anybody going against you, but I think we should keep the normal procedure of if anything's going to be directed to staff, it's either directed to staff like you just did, or we continue to do it as a body. But I'm getting confused here as why it's not happening one way or the other, only when certain individuals ask this question.
Well, let me clarify. I could not read this, and I'm making a request to do it. If it requires council approval, council should address this. I can't read it. At some time in the future, individuals are going to want to see this. If the city council doesn't want to, that's fine. I'm asking that they do do it.
I'm going to go ahead and second that, because I agree with you.
I apologize. I had intended to distribute an eleven-by-seventeen of this plan, because I agree, the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven is very difficult to read, and that should have happened, but apparently, you don't have it before you right now, so we can certainly provide that.
Do I call for the question?
Question is to approve the five-year plan?
No, to call the question means the city clerk is supposed to be taking our roll-call votes.
The call to the question would require a second, and it just closes debate.
I second it. There was a motion. I second it, and I call the question.
Has there been a motion? I'm not aware of a motion.
When Mr. Cox just spoke, and I asked, he said if it required the entire council.
Mr. Cox, were you making a motion to include a larger map?
Council wants.
Is that a motion?
I don't, wait, let's stop for a second. This is getting silly. We have an item we can't read. The message is clear, in the future, and even for this, have it blown up. So I will follow, since we're getting technical, the process of the council. Mr. City Manager, I'll direct the question to you, since we should be dealing with you. That's it. Well, this is the Measure I five-year capital improvement plan. It's one that we have changed when we decided to make changes in it, but the plan's required to be submitted, am I not? Right?
Yes, it's an annual requirement to submit.
Okay, requires that we submit it?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion or not? Jim, did you make? No. I'll make a motion to approve item D3. And I agree with him, because I can't read it either.
Second.
It's impossible to read it, Brian. But we've looked at it in some detail over the last five years, so there's nothing in there that's a surprise that I.
So there was a, there was a request from Mr. Cox directed to the city manager, and I would like to know how the city manager is going to be approaching that request.
I will be making a larger copy of this document.
Thank you.
Are there any speaker cards on this item?
I don't have any speaker cards.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Negretti. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D4, capital project needs analysis for Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the capital project needs analysis for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project for years 2018, 2019 through 2022 and 2023.
Thank you. Questions by councilmembers?
Yes, I, again, I'm going to put in the record, I was not allowed to meet Mr. Brian Gangler pursuant to the city manager's discretionary act of saying that I would not be able to, despite municipal code. So I'd like to let everybody know that I'm not prepared to vote for this item, and so I'm going to be voting no on those circumstances, because I was denied seeing city staff for particular items in this item, items that were pertaining last time to the Green Tree Boulevard Extension. Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards.
I have to say, that's kind of surprising to me, because this is a full-time job for Ms. Gomez. It's absolutely a part-time job for me. I had time to read it. Pretty easy to understand it. I was a little bothered by the title. It's not an analysis of whether or not we need the Green Tree, uh, interchange. It's, it's a, an analysis of what the financial needs are to pay for the Green Tree extension. Am I right?
Yes, and this is an SBCTA term. This is what they call it. They, Capital Project Needs Analysis for programming their funds. It doesn't commit us to the project, but they're trying to plan ahead to program funds.
You know, when you got a forty-hour-a-week job to be a city council member, and this has been posted since last Thursday.
As a point of privilege, there's no need to attack anybody here.
I don't understand why. She didn't have time to understand.
Again, you don't need to attack anybody.
I'm not interrupting you. I'd like to finish my comment.
As a point of privilege. No, I'm not. As a point of privilege, if you learn, it requires me to be able to interject when you're interrupting me.
I do not have any speaker cards. So I need a motion?
Move approval of item D4.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, again, I'd like to reiterate the same. I was not able to get the information to be able to vote on this Green Tree Boulevard project, uh, for the discretion of the city manager not allowing me, despite municipal code, allowing me to inquire to staff about any item that council would like to address.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item D5. Award of Contract for Class One Bike Path Along Bear Valley Road Project and Appropriation of Grand Funding. Um, Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council award a construction contract to Riverside Construction Company in the amount of one million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars for the Class One Bike Path Along Bear Valley Road Project. Appropriate seven hundred ninety-two thousand from an inactive transportation program, Cycle Three Augmentation Grant from the State Department of Transportation, and appropriate five hundred fifty-nine thousand from a Transportation Development Act Article Three Grant from the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, and adopt Resolution Number eighteen dash zero-eight-one, amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Thank you. Are there any questions, uh, by council members of staff? There being none. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion.
Move approval of item D5.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries with Mr. Cox abstaining.
Moving on to item D6. Lean Agreement and Release of Existing Bonds for Track Number One-Five-Five-Nine-Eight-Dash-Three to One-Five-Five-Nine-Eight-Dash-Five. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Enter in a lean agreement with Shizhou Jing as security for the improvements required by Section seventeen point six-four point zero-six-zero D2 of the Victorville Municipal Code for Track Maps One-Five-Five-Nine-Eight-Dash-Three to One-Five-Five-Nine-Eight-Dash-Five, and release the existing bonds for Track Maps One-Five-Five-Nine-Eight-Dash-Three to One-Five-Five-Nine-Eight-Dash-Five upon recordation of the lean agreement.
Thank you. Questions of, um, staff by council members? None. I do not have any, um, speaker cards. So I need a motion in a second.
I move approval of item D6. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D7. Request to Increase Award of Rebuild Overhaul of the CNG Station Compressor. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the increase of the award to Atlas Copco for the rebuild overhaul of the CNG Station Compressor in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars and one cent, for a total of fifty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-one cents, as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2018, 2019, capital improvement project budget.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Yeah, Keith, this would be a good example of the spending authority that you will have after this meeting. This was a forty-five-thousand-dollar item. It's got a nine-thousand-dollar change order. None of this would've come to the council, am I right?
Yeah, I think this came within a few hundred dollars. Uh, it exceeded my authority by a few hundred dollars.
If the change order pushes it over the fifty thousand, would that come to us? Or the change order itself is under, well under.
The change order authority, I believe, under the new code allows for, uh, fifty-thousand dollars above the fifty. Uh, whatever that threshold is, above the fifty, uh, there is change order authority. Anything that exceeds that, then I would come back to the, to the council.
So you would've had to come back with this, even if you'd approved the original forty-four thousand?
No, I believe under the current code, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, twenty, I believe it's twenty percent, so it's still a bit four-hundred dollars over, so.
I do not have any speaker cards. Uh, therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Move approval of. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, so for clarification, this item would not be under the city manager's purview because it's over by a threshold. Is that accurate?
This item is over. That's why it's coming back to you.
Thank you. Uh, the next question that I have is, do we have MOUs with CNG or any fueling, fueling stations, in case we were to have an emergency and need fuel for any type of emergency situation, or to loan out to any other cities?
I, I missed the first part of that question.
Yes. Do we have any MOUs, memorandums of understanding with CNG or any other fueling stations like Oil Beck, that we could, I don't know, potentially use more of the oil, if that's pertaining to this or not? I'm thinking of emergency preparedness.
Certainly. This is compressed natural gas. There's other stations up here. There's, there's VVTA stations. There, we have two stations. There's stations down the hill. Uh, we also keep spare compressors on hand to rebuild our stations, so I, I think there's redundancy there in the, uh, uh, option for people to go other places to get CNG fuel.
So we don't have memos of understanding or agreements?
No, they're just like a gas station. They can go get gas wherever they want to go.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D8. Annual Purchase Order for Mojave Water Agency for Regional Recharge and Recovery R3 Water Deliveries. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the annual purchase order request for MWA for R-Cubed Water Deliveries for a not-to-exceed amount of one million, one hundred forty-three thousand dollars for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any, uh, questions of staff?
Yes. Does the city of Victorville have any memo, memos of understanding with other cities, and would that affect the cost, or what's it per-unit cost? Because I know we've been loaning out water to Adelanto.
We don't have any memos of understanding. We do have agreements with adjacent jurisdictions that do have interconnect or tie-in, and I think the one that you're speaking specifically for Adelanto, we do have an emergency, uh, emergency services agreement with them, and they have been relying on that to deliver water, uh, to their pipeline system during the summer largely, but also when they've had pump failures in their community.
Does that impact the residents of the city of Victorville with their water usage? Because we have a lot of concerned citizens who are looking at water conservation and water usage, and they're letting me know that their stymie are hampered with their desire to be able to wash their vehicles outside because of the water conservation. And I want to be able to provide them an answer that's not beating around the bush. And so I think this is, uh, an opportunity to let me know if it's hampering or not hampering.
So the, it is not. There is no, uh, hampering, um, involving our provision or providing of water to the city of Adelanto on an emergency basis. Has no negative effect on our residents.
Thank you. No further questions.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need, uh, oh, someone just submitted one. Alejandra?
And, um, yes, good evening again. Thank you. Uh, yes, that was my question, what Ms. Gomez has. Uh, have you, uh, looked for other, uh, buyers to get, uh, water in order to prevent that expenditure over a million dollar? Have you tried, asked, or looked around for a better, uh, price? Or also, do you guys take care of all the, when the, you know, water conductors broke? Because in Victorville, about, um, Bear Valley and Amethes, there's always water running there. It's always running water. Sometimes, uh, the water is running after twelve hours. We call, we wait online for over forty-seven minutes, and, uh, one of the times that I called, I couldn't stay longer. I was working, and I couldn't wait for someone to come, uh, to the phone and pick up. So maybe we're wasting water, uh, by not doing the proper repairs, and yet we want to just go and buy just for only one source. Uh, it'll be good if you guys look for a different source, or, or more, you know, economical source. And it's my opinion that you guys take care of, uh, you know, the services and, um, repair ASAP, uh, all those leaks that I have seen. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like for the city manager to respond. This, the R3, R-Cubed Project, which is water we purchase for use from MWA, we make an annual allocation. We have no other choice. We have no place to, uh, to buy it. We have an agreement. They have an agreement with the state water project, where they buy water from the aqueduct. We have an adjudicated water basin, and our source of water is from the aqueduct through MWA or pump it. And the pass-through to Adelanto does not, in fact, we don't use our water rights to provide water to Adelanto. They must use theirs, and if they exceed theirs, they must buy it from MWA. Has no effect, no effect at all on the citizens of Victorville. On the other hand, separate, which is not this agenda item, if we have leaks and we're, and they're not being reported, or they're being reported, they're not being repaired, I would think that that's something we'd want to look into. But there's no competition on this. We, we are restricted in our, where we get water.
We, we get water from two places. We pump it out of the ground, or we buy it from MWA. There, there is no other source to acquire water. Um, we can acquire water rights from other entities, but water comes from those two sources. If we could catch it all when it fell out of the sky, that might help. Um, we are replenishing the aquifer with what we buy from MWA. We're also satisfying our, our makeup obligation to all the downstream communities. So, th- th- this is something we have to do. We don't have an option. It's all the result of a case that was adjudicated in San Bernardino County Courts in nineteen-ninety. This is not an option that we can go out and shop for other water. But I do agree with the issue of, of leaks and repairs in the system, and we're, we are in the process of going through major replacements in Old Town and, and others. Uh, we've got major water replacement plans, uh, pipe replacements. We've got some old pipes in the ground, four inches? Do we have four still? Some? Maybe some six?
Yeah, I don't know about four.
But, uh, but we're in the process of replacing this stuff, so it's a multi-pronged project, but this is, this is something we need to do.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, if I might, this particular item is specific to, um, providing a budget to pay for the pumping costs associated with the R-Cubed project. So that would basically remove, uh, the water from the R-Cubed basin, uh, put it in a pipe, and deliver it to our storage tanks. And, and I want to bring particular attention, because comment was made about the economics. Um, I, I think we've touched on the source of water, and the source of water is twofold. You're gonna pull it out of the ground, and you're gonna replenish the groundwater with the state aqueduct, uh, water. Um, but we have about thirty-five, thirty-six or so wells throughout the city, and as those wells are pumping water from different locations, there's different constituencies, and in some cases, different treatment processes required to, to make sure that you have the highest quality of water. And we're very mindful of that. In fact, some of our wells, um, are tied to certain types of treatment systems that we've basically shut off and mothballed effectively, because we're able to rely better on this R-Cubed project. In fact, if we could get a greater allocation of R-Cubed, we would prefer to, to purchase the water out of the R-Cubed, uh, project first, uh, because then we use it to blend. The R-Cubed water is a very high-quality water, so, uh, if we can get more and more of that high-quality wat- water, it actually reduces the cost to treat some of the water from other locations that have different types of constituencies in them. Uh, so we're very mindful of the cost-effectiveness of water when it comes to the actual, uh, allocation of right. Uh, we do rely on free production allowance, uh, though it is ramped down. Uh, that's basically your, your, your pumping rights. Um, but we also are very mindful that when it comes to make up a replacement, we're very economically minded. Uh, you know, our primary source to pull from would be the state water project. I don't know today's exact price, but it, let's call it about five hundred and fifty bucks an acre foot. So knowing that as a benchmark, we are, um, regularly on an annual basis, and we bring those items back to the council for consideration. Uh, we actually do, uh, purchase makeup, uh, and replacement rights through leasing of water rights not being used by others. And we typically find those prices at much cheaper costs. So we're, we're always watching the cost of water supply and making sure that it's the most cost-effective.
We will go to the ballgame and spend four bucks on this bottle of water. The water we buy from MWA probably costs less than one thousandth of one penny per gallon at a hundred and fifty dollars per acre feet. And I'm doing some rough math in my head. I'll bet it's cheaper than that. So if, if. Want to talk about an expensive check we're writing, a big check, terms of the water that we use and consume, that price is tiny. I'll move approval of the item if we're there.
Second.
I do not have any speaker cards.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Negretti. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D9. Award Up Agreement for Brokerage Services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the Contract Professional Services Provider Agreement with Caldwell Banker for brokerage services, and authorize the deputy city manager to execute said agreement.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, uh, council members of staff? None. I do not have any, uh, speaker cards.
Move approval of D9.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D10. Standard Sublease Agreement for SCLA Buildings Six Eighty-Three, Seven Thirty-One, and Seven Thirty-Four. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into a sublease agreement for Building Six Eighty-Three, and another standard sublease agreement for Buildings Seven Thirty-One and Seven Thirty-Four, buy-in between the SCLA-A and General Atomix Aeronautical Systems Incorporated, adopt Resolution Number SCLA-A Eighteen Dash Zero Zero Five, amending the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget for additional revenue in the amount of three hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars, and authorize the deputy city manager to execute said agreements. manager to execute said agreements.
Thank you.
Eric, this looks like a tremendous arrangement. Um, cool. Question, though, seeing this, this stuff in the paper about some of the private schools that have cheated their students out of fees and whatnot, is this a school that is going to charge tuition? Is it somehow subsidized? Do you know anything about the school?
I do know a little bit about that. I don't think you're going to find that to be the case with this company at all. But we also have three members of GA's, General Atomics Management Group here that'd be able to speak a little bit more. But specifically, these students would be, their part would be part of the Victor Valley College system that is currently at the property, but then would also transition into additional training in composites and avionics and things of that nature, and then work into a career opportunity. So there's a program in place where they will train those people and put them on, on the payroll, if you will, on a part-time basis, and hopefully choose the best of them for career opportunities.
But I mean, General Atomics is going to fund the school.
They are funding that, a large part of that. It's an amazing opportunity for this community. Credit needs to be given to General Atomics. They're a great company, over 13,000 employees worldwide. But they, as you know, we've said before, I think I presented that to the council in the past, was that one of the problems, and one of the elements that hinders our development at the base is just getting the mechanics. There's a need for an inflow of mechanics. There's a national shortage. General Atomics has taken the approach that they're going to be a part of the solution rather than just complaining about the problems. So having said that, I'd like to introduce Dave Hyatt, John Key, and Lisa Boatwright from the Aeronautical Systems Division of GA to talk a little bit more specifically.
Hi, yes, we want to lease these buildings.
Name, please.
I'm Lisa Boatwright. I am line of business manager for General Atomics.
Thank you.
I, we want to lease these buildings in corporation. We have current workings out at the SCLA buildings in conjunction with our aircraft modifications, and we would be moving that into one of the larger hangars. And then our apprenticeship program, we would like to move into the two smaller hangars for our AMP programs and our composite programs, bringing additional employment opportunities and job opportunities for incoming students.
I'd like to introduce, I'd like to introduce Dave Hyatt, who's, would actually be in, his group's going to be in the larger hangar, 863. That's the component that, the component that Ms. Boatwright just mentioned that would actually be working on aircraft right now, that are doing some of that already at the airport.
Hello, good evening. Dave Hyatt, I'm a director with General Atomics. I've worked with the company now for about 30 years. We do plan on doing modifications in one of the bigger hangars, and then the two smaller, older hangars. We're in a partnership with VVC to provide pathways for high school students to understand what opportunities there are for, how do you get the term right, aerospace opportunities within the High Desert. So partnership between General Atomics, General Electric, COMAV, and other businesses in the High Desert. So Boeing, certainly. One of the hangars is going to be an apprenticeship program that's sponsored by VVC but funded by General Atomics for avionics technicians. The other hangar, 731, will be used for composites to try and help VVC College expand their AMP program, again funded by General Atomics. We're not asking for any money from the city. We're not asking for any funding. We're just looking to get approval for the leases, context of what Eric's put together and our company.
Does this link together with the current school we have at the base? Eric, do you know the one?
Yes, it does.
I can't remember the name. It's with the college.
It's the AMP program with Victor Valley College.
Same, same.
Yes. That's part, part one, FA Part 147. This mirrors with it. So to expand upon that a little bit, when a student graduates with an AMP license, he's got the basic fundamentals. He does not have what it takes to work on these modern composite, for lack of a better term, drone aircraft that are highly sophisticated and with a tremendous amount of electronics in it. It's a different world. So the program that General Atomics is talking about takes someone from a very basic elementary, got the book smarts, and now puts it into practice. Can you?
An apprenticeship.
Yes. Can you mention that, explain a little bit more about the apprenticeship, how that, how you had anticipated that happening specifically? I was, some information we had was about 10 to 20 employees that you're going to have there, and then those, you'd be willing to train about 50 to 75 employees on a rotating shift.
Yeah. The apprenticeship program is under the avionics director, and that's not part of my group. But I believe it's about 50 students at a time to go through the program, and then at the end, there's a certificate that's granted by the state of California through VVC somehow. On the other side, the question about the existing AMP program that's currently running at SCLA, we're moving ahead at risk that we're going to get the agreements in place with VVC. We haven't got them just quite yet. We're in meetings with the, with the president and vice president, trying to work out all the details for how all that's going to work, sharing space and all of that. But we feel that we're going to get there, so we're just going to move ahead at risk. Doesn't seem for us, it's not a lot of money, I guess.
Madam Mayor, I have some quick comments. First of all, welcome to our guest from General Atomics. This is a great, great program. This is the kind of leadership that we're hopeful of as communities start to grow, that companies in those communities begin to look at the local talent and put them on a path to, to actually gain those skills that are necessary in today's world. And for anybody that knows anybody in their twenties, it's a high school graduate that is looking at Victor Valley College, I'd like to say you should tell them to run, don't walk, and get into this airframe and power plant program, understanding that drones are the future. General Atomics and companies like it are the future. And the sooner you can get in on the ground floor now, you can grow with that industry. And there's not a lot of industries in the, in the economy this, these days, that have this kind of opportunity for young folks. These are real jobs, and this is a real company. And we always hear complaints, there's no opportunity. Well, this is a great opportunity, and you don't have to have experience. They're going to train you. And you've got to apply yourself and take advantage of these programs because a lot of communities don't have an airport like we do, and a lot of communities don't have great companies like we do. So, well done. This is a great item. That's my full support.
Thank you. And that is our approach, is pathways for local students in the Victor Valley to stay in the Victor Valley. I think that's our, ultimately, my goal is to give back to the community, and that's one of the reasons that I'm here tonight. And the AMP portion and working on aircraft is just part of it. Our company employs about 25 to 3,000 people up here that just aren't mechanics, from stock clerks to expeditors to planners to cooks, executive assistants. And we're going to continue to expand what we're trying to do, the community outreach, to get the name out there and into the valley. So this is the first step.
And lastly, we have Mr. John Key, who's the strategic business manager for this business unit.
Good evening, and thank you very much. I'd like to say that our, our team is very well looking forward to this opportunity. We are working extremely hard to make sure that this is a successful venture. We have not only this and work, we have at least a million acres worth of properties and surrounding areas that we are growing. Our company's been growing at about 10% a year. So this is an opportunity to get in on the ground floor for those who are looking for the opportunity to grow themselves. So we very much appreciate the opportunity and, and look forward to growing this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. What a great opportunity for the youth here in, in our Victor Valley. Thank you.
I'm happy to move, move approval of this item.
Second.
I, I have a speaker card. Did you have something else?
No, ma'am.
I do have one speaker card. Lisa Boatwright? Or you're?
That's, that's Lisa Boatwright. That's.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you so much. Okay, now we need.
Motion and second.
I get clarification. Mr. Kennedy, did you make the motion? Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Negretti. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D11, consideration of request to defend Mayor Garcia in a civil action. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the defense of Mayor Garcia and authorize the city attorney's office to proceed with providing said defense.
I'd like to direct this question to the city attorney. We are absolutely not here to judge the issue, whether, whatever the problem is. I only want to know if whatever this harassment incident, or whatever it was, if that occurred in the course of the mayor's normal course of duties, that's all.
The answer to that is yes. This is basically a civil restraint process, trying to preclude the mayor from basically performing her duties as the mayor. That's how we see it. The answer is yes.
Are there any questions of staff by council members?
Yes. So to the city manager, I'm sorry, to the city attorney, it's my understanding that you are in violation of the city's policy by having a council member in this case, the appointed presiding chair, to approve of her item being put on today's agenda. The policy clearly prevents any one or more council members from asking a city manager or a city attorney from adding anything into the agenda without council body approval. And this has been done in these circumstances, and I don't understand why.
To respond to that, the city attorney, as you will see in the policy manual, has the authority to place items on the council agendas. I placed this item on the agenda per my prerogative, consistent with the city policy manual. And you do raise another good point, and to err on the side of caution, I would request that Mayor Garcia actually recuse herself from this item and let the rest of the council members discuss it.
The mayor has declared a conflict. I will now assume the chair. This is still under consideration at this point in time. I didn't see if there are any cards on this item.
I believe, I believe there are some cards.
There is a card. Okay.
D11.
Correct.
I'm not finished with my questions, but if you want to set them aside, that's fine.
For D11, the first card that is here is Joe Ficetti. Yes, I have yours. I, I have cards. I have a lot of cards.
She disappeared?
Correct. We don't want to have anybody accuse her of having a conflict of interest, so.
Okay. I understand. Thank you for explaining that. Okay, she's not really being honest. Okay. Nothing occurred in City Hall or anything political. Okay? This was all of a result when I went to Richie's restaurant and told her, well, I didn't know who it was, but I found out it was her car with her lights on. And I just announced in a restaurant, there was not many people, that somebody left her lights on. And it happened to be Gloria's. Okay? Has nothing to do with anything in politics, or we don't see eye to eye, but that has nothing to do with it. And this is a place where you can talk. There's a lot of fabricated, fabricated evidence by her that's totally untrue. Okay? She didn't show up for the first two restraining order hearings. Okay? The second time, I guess your, one of your city attorneys showed up and got reamed by the judge for Gloria not being there. So I guess she holds herself higher than that, even though she was ordered to show up. I've seen in the Daily Press, fake news, that the restraining order was dismissed. No, it wasn't. It's now timed at another date. Fake news. Shame on you, Daily Press. Okay? Now, it would be bad if I said nothing, that somebody left her parked with her lights on in their car and going out. Would you like that to happen, anybody? Was I doing the right thing? Yes, I was. She's offended by that? I have no why. Don't know why. However, anyway, this morning, as I had breakfast, there's two people, which are here now, okay? And I talked, and what I'm doing is offering to put out an olive branch. I think she's confused. She doesn't know what she's doing. I did nothing wrong, and the response I got from the city attorney was like, I couldn't believe it. There's many witnesses that will say that that's not true. So right now, I'm bringing you an olive branch to settle this, and she will come out and tell the truth, okay? Do the right thing and restore what she has done.
You have 30 seconds?
What she has done is wrong. Okay? And it's not right. As a mayor, shouldn't do that. I was simply trying to help. Had nothing to do with any city politics. I don't care if I disagree with her, this and that, nothing. And then actually about the clock, I'd rather see that clock up here so people can see it when it's going to run out of time. And just for fun, with your water, did you ever look into powdered water?
Your time is up.
Time is up.
Yeah, and as a point of order, we had first established
No, I was just a joke.
Questions for council members, and I was cut off. I couldn't finish my questions, and we immediately went to public comment. So I want to make sure that's on the record, that that just happened right now.
We will get to pub, we will get to the council comment. Thank you, Mr. Ficetti.
Oh, one thing, I just wanted to.
Mr. Alejandro, you're next, please.
Are you, are you going to accept that, or no?
That's, that's up to this council after we conclude this item. Ms. Alejandra.
Well, first of all, I'm another victim of Gloria Garcia. I've been attacked, yelled at, and pointed at as a criminal by her here on this place. The first time actually that I approached Gloria Garcia, she was sitting there. Jim Cox was next. Jim Kennedy was on the other side. And I wanted to talk to her about my car being filled up and why was she misplacing the cards, you know, flipping up and calling the people that she want. The thing that she did to me that day, she said, "You are not allowed to talk to me like that. Go and sit down." That's what Mayor Gloria Garcia did to me. That was the first approach. Over there, I have witnessed. I have witnessed. The next time she denied my right to speak, she overused her power. She's a very mean person. She mistreats us. The second issue, she threw us all out of here by the end of the meeting, and she told a lot of us, American citizens, "Go back to Mexico. Go back to Mexico. You're criminals. You guys, you know, receiving food stamps and all that." She yelled a lot of crap of that. That's not for the city major to behave like that. That's not for the city major to behave like that. The next time she pointed at me, I was sitting on this side, she pointed at me and Mr. Godina, a city council, he's running for city council. Everybody was yelling. Everybody was yelling at us, criminals, liars, all that. She didn't quiet nobody, except at me and Mr. Godina. She pointed at us. "I warning you. I warning you. I'm going to put you out." That's using overpower from a city major. After that, I stepped into the city clerk, and I request, and I talked about it last time that I was here. I request a formal form or format to formally complain. That was denied to me. I did it a second time 10 days ago.
You have 30 seconds?
I stepped into the city hall again, requested to speak to the city clerk for my needs. She was not there. They said that she wasn't training for a whole week. I left a message. Today is Tuesday. It's the 10th day. I have not received a phone call back. So I do not agree that we are going to pay to defend this kind of behavior. That's not for city major to treat us like that.
Your time is up?
We are not criminals.
Thank you very much. Al Cattell? Al Cattell? Al? In the back, Al? Did you want to speak? Thank you.
Can't believe I'm up here. I'm here because of the Green Tree Extension baloney. I think it's the biggest scam pulled on the city of Victorville that's ever happened. You tell me one thing that benefits us.
What we're going to do is, I'm going to have to interrupt you, but we're on D-11.
What?
We're on D-11. That issue is over, but if you would like to speak at the end of the meeting, we will change this card so you can. But this is on D-11.
I only got three minutes, and people had 20.
I'm sorry. This is a totally different subject that we're discussing.
I got a right to have three minutes. The Brown Act says so. I got a copy of the Brown Act at home.
I want to accommodate you. I'm trying to explain that we're going to accommodate you. But we have people who do want to speak on this item.
Yeah, but you wrote the wrong number, so later.
I got the wrong number?
Yeah. We will accommodate him. He did write Green Tree Extension on the back, but on the front, he wrote D-11. Okay? We'll get back to it. The next card I have is Romero Rodriguez. Romero?
Hello. I too am surprised in why the city attorney is defending Ms. Gloria Garcia. Not Mayor Gloria Garcia, but Ms. Gloria Garcia with city funds, with our taxpayer dollars. As to my knowledge, this was an incident that happened in private property at a restaurant. Nothing to do with her mayoral duties or city duties. And this is completely improper. I don't know if it's illegal, but it should not be happening. She should be paying out of her own pocket for what she did privately. Now, if he would have been doing that at a city council meeting, that's something else. And why wasn't this brought to term also when other expenditures come up? When almost the $19 million that we used up, how come we didn't have a meeting to find out where the money was going to go also? Only for this part, this time? The city, I think it's really, really needs reassessment, reorganization. Tell you the truth, Ms. Garcia, she's not my mayor because I didn't vote for her. You guys elected her. That's how the system is set up. It's a very antiquated system. I think we need to change things around so we can find out exactly what's going on. I'd like to thank also Ms. Gomez for letting us questioning everything, what's going on. If this wouldn't happen, she wouldn't be doing that. We wouldn't be knowing anything that's going on behind closed doors with the city council and city happenings. But the thing, I'm completely opposed to the city spending our tax money and defending her for something that happened at a public event, at a public place, at Richie's Diner. So next time I have a problem with somebody, I can come to you guys, and you guys will pay my lawyer's fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Raoul Rodriguez Jr.?
Okay, folks, I had a meeting today with Joseph at about 5:30, right before the meeting, and this is what he told me. That he was at a restaurant, and he told him, he said he told Gloria Garcia that her lights were left on. Then he tells me that the next day, he got a ticket by the police department. This is what he told me, and he's blaming Gloria Garcia because he claims she got the police department after her, after him. So I'm just repeating what he told me. This is what he told me outside in the parking lot. So to me, it didn't make any sense. So that's what he told me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Bisted? I know I messed that up. Sorry.
I have found the mayor to be reasonable, a person that you can deal with easily. The reason the city has been involved in the court case seems like it could be related to the police allegedly being involved. So it seems like it's, as it said in the backup report, it's a nominal amount for the city attorney to be called upon to pay. That seems reasonable. But probably the best news tonight was about the Olive Branch putting something like this behind the city because it sounds like it could have some very trivial or misunderstandings involved. Now, it's difficult to undo a court case, but the Olive Branch issue sounds like the best news tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Cordova?
Good afternoon. Ms. Mayor, although she's not here, I respect her, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, and command staff. I just caught wind of this issue just a couple of seconds ago, and I just wanted to speak in behalf of the mayor. I find her to be extremely professional, courteous. She takes the time to listen to people. And what I'm also forming the opinion here is that, let's bottom line, is that the elements of harassment were not established. And when the elements are not established within the court of law, it's thrown out, dismissed, or what have you. It appears to me that at the time of the incident, I don't know all of the facts, but I just heard what the last commentator stated. The mayor was not acting within the course and scope of her performance. This was an issue that had occurred outside. But it also appears to me that the accuser is here tonight, and he has been here almost every council meeting. So the accuser is actually the harasser. Other commentators are just, it's all hearsay, just forming an opinion because they do not like her and because of all of the animosity that has been occurring within the council. But in whole, I believe that, in my opinion, she acts, she has been performing her duties exceptionally well. She is an outstanding leader, and she leads by positive example to the Latino community in the city of Victorville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth. Rudy Garcia?
Thank you. Mayor Gloria Garcia is my mother. And as far as the restaurant, I'll get to that in just a second. But as far as what happened here between this individual and my mother, that's as a council pewter aside. What I'm here to tell you is that this individual has harassed my mother at Durski Community Bank in public, not once but twice. Okay? And the last time, the restaurant, Richie's Diner, I was there. He confronted my mother. And the only reason he's walking right now is because my wife wouldn't let me get to him. There's a word for cowards like you. Yeah, I'm talking to you. There's a word for cowards like you.
Keep your comments here. Thank you.
There's a word for, they like to confront women. Four foot 10, 100 pounds, what? Great grandmother. There's a word for that, but I won't say it. Yeah, film me. Okay? This, I begged my mother to file a restraining order, but she didn't want to do that, and this is the result. Okay? I just want to let you know, he harasses her at her office, calls, and wants to speak to her. So I just want to let the council and law enforcement aware of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sandra Garcia. I'm sorry. I can't see clearly the first name, so I may have messed that up. If so, I'm sorry.
First of all, her lights weren't on. They automatically go off. But in defense to everything else that everybody's saying that it happened at Richie's Diner, it is on video, on your guys' video and this video, that she's been verbally attacked twice here on the diocese. I was even here at those meetings. That's where it started. Then she got scared because she was attacked...
No, no, no. Keep the direct, speak to me.
Because she was verbally attacked at Richie's Diner. He didn't tell her her lights were on. He just came up telling her she was useless, that she shouldn't be the mayor. He was saying comments like that. I was between him and her and my husband. I know what he said. But it started here. He's been harassing, he's doing this in retaliation for her pressing charges because he went and tried to press charges on her, and he got denied. So that's why we're here today. Thank you.
I'll defer to the clerk for a second. Do we have any other cards? Any additional cards? That's all the cards I have at this point in time. I'm going to close out the audience comments, bring it back to the city council. And before we enter into any decisions, comments from the council? I believe that, Monica, you had requested to make a comment or a statement?
Questions?
Question, okay.
So again, to the city attorney, it's my understanding that you're in violation of the city's policy by having a council member, in this case, the appointed presiding chair, having this agenda today. The policy clearly prevents any one or more counselors from coming and asking any city manager or requesting to any city attorney to add anything on the agenda without the council body's approval. And this has been done. I'm not sure why. No, this occurrence did not occur in her performance of her duties while sitting at Richie's Diner Restaurant with her family. I believe Mrs. Medawar was the one that a week later handed Mr. Ficetti this citation violation. I believe our municipal code reflects coming back to the violation that has happened today in front of us. And I like these violations to be in part of the city's records for the corrections. And I make a formal verbal request for the city to cure and correct this action, to bring the city back to being in line with the rules that are consistent with transparency and not arbitrariness in such decisions under the person's discretion that has been done by the city attorney's actions. Are the taxpayers by law restrained in representing any legislative body with public funds when such acts of annoyance, disturbance, mockery, and abuse of power are exercised in the areas of personal convening? That's a question I'm posing. What cost did the city incur already as a fight... About 30 seconds? ...as a representation to a civil harassment? Why should the city council consider defending a council member who antagonizes and uses absolute power to flex fantastical muscle?
Is that a motion? I'm sorry.
These are all questions that I don't have any responses as of yet, that I'm waiting for responses.
Okay, we will try to get to those, or any comments from the council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you.
Or questions? Sorry, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. I would like to say to our visitors and folks who may not be used to our council meetings for the last two years, this is an incredible waste of our time. And we have professional staff here. We have very accomplished people here. We have law enforcement here. We have the city attorney. And there are petty disagreements in local politics. It's sad because there's a lot of great stuff happening today. But I just want people to understand. There is a small part of every community that does not understand what's happening. They're angry. They don't know how to articulate themselves. They don't know how to work with others. They don't know how processes work. And then they become resentful. Every two years, we have elections, and this could happen to a school board. It could happen to a city council or water agency. People have disagreements. But to be here to talk about this is laughable. But it's also a pathetic waste of time. Mayor Garcia is doing a great job. She's the first Latina mayor in the city of Victorville. And when we're doing this job, people aren't happy. Sometimes people aren't happy. And it amazes me that they come to the city of Victorville as if it's a one-stop shop for whatever is wrong with them. Whatever bothers them. And very many oftentimes, whatever their issue is cannot be solved by a city government. So there are other ways to have stress relief. But to come here and to attack the mayor of our city is despicable. But, you know, we're doing the city's business, and you'll see 41 votes all the time. So it's a long waste of time, but we're doing our job.
Time? Mr. Kennedy? Any comments or questions? Mr. Kennedy, any comments or questions?
Has a lawsuit been filed?
If I might, Mayor Protem, I'd like to answer some of the questions that have been raised today.
You, I was going to ask, there were some questions pending, and I hope you will try to answer those.
The first was whether or not, or how this item was placed on the agenda. Under the city's policy manual, Chapter 4, Section 3, Subsection 3, and Subsection C, and I'll read it to you. "When so directed by a majority of the city council," and this is the key, "or upon his or her own initiative, when circumstances warrant, the city manager and the city attorney may place items on the agenda." This item was placed on the agenda by my own initiative, totally consistent with the recently adopted council policy. The second thing to know is, the comments here, we're not having the trial. That's what the courthouse is for next door. All we're asking tonight is to have your authorization, consistent with Government Code, Section 995, which basically, if any council member requests a defense in a matter affecting the scope of their activities, that they get a defense. And you are required to defend them under those circumstances. Mr. Ficetti is attempting to use basically a civil restraint process to preclude Mayor Garcia from performing her duties. Doesn't necessarily be confined to City Hall. So the question before you, we're not having a trial tonight, is just a simple question as to whether or not the council is going to basically provide for her defense. The fact is, she has received a civil restraint complaint. It's not actually formally a complaint. It's basically a writ process. And we actually had a hearing on Friday. We took the initiative to go and defend her because we did not have a council meeting and could not seek prior approval. So all that being said, all we're asking for is to have the ability to defend her. The issues that are brought up tonight, those are before the court. The fact that Mr. Ficetti is offering an olive branch is encouraging. If he wants to pursue that, the appropriate way would be to come and discuss it with me. And to the extent we can get it resolved without going through the trial process, that would be wonderful for everybody involved. However, at this point, it is before the court. You have a council member that has basically been sued in court. And so, under the Government Code, and I will read the Government Code because it is somewhat mandatory, it says, and it's Section 995, "Except as otherwise provided in Section 995.2 or 995.4, upon the request of an employee," and the courts have indicated that an employee includes an officer, i.e. a council member, or former employee, "a public entity shall," it's not "may," "shall provide for the defense of any civil action or proceeding brought against him in his official capacity or individual capacity, or both on account of an act or omission in the scope of his employment as an employee of the public." The civil restraint filed by Mr. Ficetti basically is challenging Mrs. Gloria Garcia's ability to act as a mayor in, not only in the City Hall, but out in the public. So we believe it's appropriate to defend her at this time. And again, to the extent there's an opportunity to settle that, if there's an olive branch out there, obviously... out there, obviously, I'm always in favor of settling these matters and putting these matters to rest. But all I'm asking for is the authorization to defend her.
So council members, you have heard from the people who spoke. You have also heard the questions from a council member, comments from other council members. Your decision is whether or not you believe this was an official capacity and authorize the attorney to represent Mayor Garcia. It is not whether or not they're guilty or innocent. It is not whether or not that, that, that'll come out in the, if they want to drop it or hand, whatever. That's not up to us. That could have been up to us, but now it's in the court. We would be intervening in the court if we tried to. But your, your decision, if you believe she needs the city attorney to represent her at official capacity or not.
So I'd like to inter-
There's open for a motion.
I'd like to interject. You read a code, a civil code or a government code, nine-nine-five point two, then you said point four, and you alluded to the word employee, i.e. council member, which is very interesting because to disclose, the city manager, when I had that argument with him and debated that I was an employee of the city of Victorville, he denied that to be the fact, that I was not an employee and I wasn't covering. So I just wanted to shed light on what I'm understanding from your reading of that civil code versus what we're encountering in the past with the city manager's decision. So that that was kind of enlightening. And the last thing, I want to bring up a motion myself. And the motion includes that the use of public funds and resources for lack of a responsible city representative was done outside the role of a mayor, and it would be imprudent to continue the wasteful spending for capricious arbitrary and untransparent actions committed outside of the professionalism that is expected of a city mayor's, mayoral seat. I oppose this pork barrel spending on the city of Victorville, and this is my motion.
To, to respond to-
Wait, wait. There's a motion on the floor.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
Dies.
If I might, Mayor Protem, with respect to the government code nine-nine-five, there have actually been court cases that have indicated that council members are deemed to be officers and are included within the definition of employee for the purposes of government code section nine-nine-five.
I think the discussion is over and Mayor calls for the vote.
Move for approval of item D-11.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no, Mayor Garcia absent.
At this point in time, if somebody asked the mayor to please return to her chair, yeah, I'll give the gavel back to her. Yes?
Oh, okay. You want? Well, that's where we are? Thank you. Okay, we move on. Item D-12, discussion regarding loud music disturbances in applicable municipal code. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Any action is at the discretion of the city council.
Are there any questions of staff by council members?
Well, I asked to put this on the agenda and then I read the staff report, which I hope we all did, and it looks to me like we have all the, all the ordinances and rules in place to, to deal with this issue. I guess I'm, I'm, I am only troubled by the person who spoke last time, who said that she has just repeatedly, repeatedly experienced this loud noise and the police come, but they don't do anything and nothing has happened. Do we have any further information on that?
Mayor and council, the citizen that you're speaking to, I have corresponded with her and talked with her a few times. Our code official has as well, as well as the police chief. It's just a matter of us being able to catch, to be able to respond to the location when the music is going on, on the weekends. Obviously, our deputies have much higher priority calls, so we're really working with her to try to get the timing right. But we do have the existing code on the books in our municipal code, as well as a penal code that the, the chief has referenced. And he has advised us that he's let his dispatchers and deputies know that they can utilize any of these codes to try to stop this and try to help her. So we're continuing to work with her.
Is there a way in a situation like this that a person could, using their phone or camera or something? People, people video all kinds of bad events in this world. You'd think we could maybe video that kind of an event and have some sort of proof, is that?
I'll let the code official or Lieutenant Wickham speak, but my understanding is either a code official or a deputy has to witness it in, while, while the, while the violation is taking place. I don't believe the video is sufficient, but you can add, add to that, George.
Thank you. The video may be sufficient if it's of quality, but the concern is making sure that we notify the person who's in charge and control of that property, that they know that we received a complaint. That's the first step is a warning. Then after that administratively, we can, as, as the staff report indicates, issue pretty stiff fines, assessed against that person, assessed against that property, in addition to that, and assessed against any party goer, should there be party goers that are maybe adding to that nuisance. But certainly, that's, that's definitely an option if the, if it meets that criteria of, of holding that person responsible for that nuisance, so we can issue, properly issue that notice.
Madam Mayor, I have a quick comment. What was great about this item is that there is a way to deal with these problems. So if I'm reading it correctly, this is a matter for either the code enforcement folks or the police. Is that true?
That's correct. Typically, as a deputy city manager indicated, it's happening late, so the-
And I, and I understand that law enforcement has quite a bit of, on their hands. And on the other hand, we do have great resources. And I really enjoyed the earlier public information outreach on dumping, which is annoying, very annoying. But so is loud music. And I think we've all experienced this one time or another. And the key thing is to know what the city resources are. The hours have been modified. When it comes to being on the city council, one of the things you always have to look at is how many code enforcement officers are appropriate for the city, the size of your city, but also law enforcement. So we're going to continue to add, and we're going to continue to add. And this is, this is really good clarification for our residents. They need to call city hall and understand what the situation is. I didn't understand it myself. I didn't, and, and until a few years ago, and now, I mean, I'm more than happy to discuss it with anyone. But we all have jobs to do-
You have 30 seconds?
And the last thing you need is aggravation. And if you don't build a record, a history of a nuisance property owner, they're just going to continue doing it. But you have to know the proper channels on doing it. So, like I said, I'd, I'd really like to see some public outreach on this issue right here and what, what to do. Thank you.
Well, I guess not. I do have one speaker card for this item, D-12. Ruth Cordova.
Honorable Mayor, nice to have you back.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, council members. The issue that I have is irrelevant, or the comment that I have is irrelevant to this one particular issue, but it's kind of like consistent to the statement. And Mr. Negreti, Councilman Negreti, if you recall, when you spoke, you made a statement with respect to, you know, when you're driving around and, and you see, you kind of wonder who these people are when they have their animals chained up in a really hot day. That really bothered me. I'm an, I love my animals. And it really bothered me. And, you know, every day I thought about that. And I'm hopeful, and only you know this, the council members know this, I'm hopeful that when you witness animal cruelty as such during extreme hot or extreme cold weather conditions, that you enforce proper protocols and enhance the citations or penalties or whatever you need to do in order to deaden that type of behavior. And if they don't pay those penalties, put a lien on their home. You know, hold their, the homeowners accountable. But please do something for the animals. I mean, that really bothers me. But thank you for that statement. Otherwise, I would not have brought that up. Thank you.
That was the only card that I had.
As a point of order, there was a request made by Mr. Flentis to read into the record the concerns that he had established. So the city clerk and Andre should have received that information a few hours ago.
Did that have anything to do with the noise ordinance?
No.
Where on the noise ordinance still?
Public comment?
No, we're not there yet.
Okay.
So anyhow, that was the last speaker card that I had on D-12. I need a motion in a second, or is there some other action that we're going to take on this? This is a-
Action recommended, I'm sorry.
Well, it says motion or second, or at the discretion of the council.
I, I'm not sure there's necessarily to take any action. I think it was an information item that Councilmember Negreti wanted to know what was being done. And staff has provided a, a outline of all of the things that we actually have in the municipal code. So unless the council wants to direct differently, I think it's just an issue of putting the resources towards-
Is everyone satisfied with the way-
I would, I hope, hopefully.
Wonderful. Very good. Thank you. Now we move on to item, to public comments. And I do have some cards. Madam Clerk, did you want to read the statement first?
This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per government code section five-four-nine, five-four-point-three, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code section five-four-nine, five-seven-point-nine, Penal Code section four-zero-three.
Thank you. The first card that I have is Tyler Woodard. And after Tyler will be Alejandra.
Good evening, council. I think all of us have heard the saying that elections have consequences. It is unfortunate that our city has someone like Blanca Gomez representing us because in reality, she does not serve Victorville's best interests. Blanca has proven that she represents the far-left socialist Democrat Party's agenda. She has blocked Victorville from joining the lawsuit to overturn Governor Brown's unlawful and unconstitutional sanctuary state law. She would rather have illegal aliens terrorizing and committing crimes throughout Victorville. Sanctuary city policies only make communities less safe and shelter criminals. Take a look at San Francisco. Because of San Francisco's sanctuary city policies, Kate Steinle was murdered by an illegal alien who had been deported five times. Kate Steinle is just one of many lives that have been lost because of failure to enforce immigration laws. Yet Blanca does not want to allow Victorville to enforce immigration laws. All of you as elected officials of the city of Victorville has a responsibility to keep the residents of Victorville safe. With Blanca on, on the council, Victorville is genuinely witnessing the consequence that an election can have. I urge any Victorville residents here tonight that have not signed the recall petition to please do so, so we can have the opportunity to get Blanca off the council and right this wrong. I also urge everyone here tonight, before you go to vote this November, take the time and research every candidate, because the last thing we need is another person like Blanca as an elected official. I thank the council for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Alejandra, and after Alejandra, Robert Herrmann.
Well, I'm going to speak, I am very happy with the performance of Blanca Gomez, because she is the only one, the only one that truly informs of what's going on in the city. We don't have the response to what we request or to our needs. I seen, for instance, Maggie Martin walking into the city clerk and they opened the door and right away they walk her into behind the offices, but that was not the response that I received. So I think that you guys are excluding Blanca Gomez because she's the only one that asks the questions. And that informs, that inform us what is really going on. Also, I have a request to see the signatures that I've been, I've, are being collected to recall Blanca Gomez. I have requested that twice, like I said. Nobody has backed to me, and they refuse to show us the signatures that are being collected. Mayor Garcia is not doing a great job like Mr. Negreti says, but I guess Mr. Negreti is so comfortable being like, he is a lazy person. He rather to say yes, yes, and, and instead of finding out what is best for the community. Obviously, Gloria Garcia and Negreti and other two of you are not working for the community. And we need people that works for the community. And Jess, thank you for reminding us. Election comes and we're going to vote. We're going to vote. If we don't have some answers and you guys don't behave and don't do your job because you guys are not doing your job, you Mayor Garcia, you're not doing your job. You're not treating well your community. You're not treating us well. Mr. Negreti, do something. Put yourself to work. Don't continue being lazy and just attacking and excluding every, everybody else that is really working for the community. Mayor Garcia, the way you correct us and the way you attacked us, why don't you correct others? Why don't you do equal for everybody? City clerk, take all your trainings, respond to the messages, contact us, respond to us.
About 30 seconds?
The way you respond to Maggie Martin, the way to you guys respond to the people that you like, respond to all of us. We all have the right to know what's going on. And you guys are denying our right. And that's the only reason that you're excluding Blanca Gomez. And we need to see the signatures that are being collected for the recall. We need to see them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Robert Herrmann?
I had a couple things. Is this on? The project for the trash was excellent. I'm, I'm, they're doing a fantastic job with that. As a contractor, I continuously witness this kind of thing going on. I would just like to add one thing. The people, every day are sitting at Home Depot with their trash trucks, saying they haul trash. They do not have business licenses, and they're doing work in a capacity at a, at an amount that requires them to have a contractor's license, which they don't have either. So I would ask that code enforcement- So I would ask that code enforcement, maybe go by and educate these people. You don't have to write them tickets right away, but educate these people. If you want to do business in Victorville, you have to get a business license just like the rest of us. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the circus. And our ringleader is just that. And everyone, everyone needs to know why we can't get anything done in the city. Okay? My God. Couldn't see, the paper was too big or too small and she makes a big deal out of that when there's plenty of time to get down to real business. They, secondly, this is why I'm recalling her. All right? Now, they want to see signatures, they don't, they can't, they have no right to the signatures until we turn them in. We are still collecting, having people sign the petition. They have no right for us to give them the signatures. Charlene doesn't have, we haven't given her any signatures. So why do they complain about going to her? Because they want to see signatures that we've gotten so far. Okay? The signatures all get turned in when we get enough of them. All right? So with all of that said, Mrs. Gomez, do yourself a favor and just step down. I ask for your resignation like I always do. Thanks, council.
Thank you. Uh, Ramiro Rodriguez and after Ramiro, Robin Hefston.
No one's gonna relinquish power willingly. No one's gonna give up their seat willingly. They, they will for a reason. One of the reasons was because, because of Blanca's vote, the golf course wasn't being processed through. So one, Mr. Kennedy is not running again, but somebody else is gonna run in his position that really wants to go with, ahead with the golf course, which is costing the city, us, what, half a million dollars a year in subsidies? Nine thousand dollars on a week or, was it nine thousand dollars a week? Half a million dollars? I would love to have a business and have the city pay me nine thousand dollars a week to keep it afloat. Now they could have done that to the restaurants and everything, but the thing is, the city has changed since 1970, since 1980. In the year 2000 alone, it was 75% white, 12% Hispanic. Now, it's 54 to 56% Hispanic. And you're looking at about 17% white now with a 13% of Exodus of the white population leaving the city of Victorville. So the thing is, things are changing. The median age of the year 2000 was 18 years. Now it's 29.3 years of age, the median age of this city now. So now, we're, from going to what, 70, what was it that we have? We had close to 60,000 people in the year 2000. We have now 122,000 to this day. Now the census comes out in 2020. It's gonna be maybe more than that, but the city I was made up 20 years ago was fine because it's only had 50,000 people. So the council could elect their mayor. Now, we should elect the mayor. We should elect the city manager. We should elect our chief of police, the populace, not a, not a field like it was. Maybe it worked fine a few years back, but things have to be changing now. And the thing is, they work together, everybody. Because the city of Hesperia, Apple Valley and Victorville are all in the same, it's, it's, it's the upper desert. So why did they kick Blanca? Why did they arrest, arrest her? Because she had two Hispanic last name people running, trying to run for office in the city of Hesperia. And that throws everything to whack because everybody knows if you have Hispanic last name, you get elected. If Jeffrey Dahmer's last name was Sanchez, he would get elected too. That's the reality, but not everybody that has a Spanish last name really represents their people or the people. I'm not saying to represent the Hispanic people. I'm saying to be fair with everybody. This city, the city council and the city management, the city government needs to reassess itself, rearrange itself and restructure itself because the way it's set up right now is for when there was a populace of 40,000 people. It went double in just ten years. So just think about that. Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, Robin?
Yes, uh, my name's Robin Vidston and as the speaker referenced earlier on SB 54, there are citizens that are coming forward and would like to have a vote. We understand that it was on the agenda, cannot be voted on in closed session. So we would like to see it on the agenda again and we would like to see an actual vote on the, that item. And I would like to also bring up that a group of us once again went to a meeting where Blanca Gomez was in another city, Hesperia, similar to when she went to Rialto, at a meeting that is called Know Your Rights. These meetings are designed for people in our country illegally to advise them not to interact with ICE. It's very disappointing to attend a meeting like this because they teach people in our country illegally not to obey law enforcement. And at the same time, they venerate the person that's breaking our laws. So it's very disappointing because I have always honored law enforcement and had a rejection of lawbreakers. So once again, Blanca Gomez, uh, in her promotional piece, listed that she's a council member just as in Rialto, uh, when she attended that meeting, she came as a Victorville council member. And it's just one more reason we'd like the public to understand what is going on and to study and sign the recall papers. There are many Victorville citizens that have it available. It's also online and you can go to recallblancagomez.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Deanne?
The young lady, Blanca Gomez, is doing what my parents said not to do. Don't get that rope and stretch it so long. You're gonna end up being hurt. I too am asking for SB 54 to be put on, back on the agenda, to be voted on and stop her from stopping it. Many, many different counties and cities are doing this. Now, at the beginning of the meeting, she had a camera, like this one right here, up here. I think that's against the Brown Act. It says that the public can videotape and that the dais can use, I guess that's a big camera up there, I don't know, so the rest of the world can see what's going on. She has no right to do it. She has no right to get off of that dais and go back there and grab that flag the last time. She has no right to do that. She's breaking all the laws. She needs to learn how to follow laws. I have a person attending an open meeting from the video, can do video recording. It didn't say somebody from the dais can. And the Brown Act, which was developed in 1953, was for the people to have a say-so when they go to their city council or their school board. They, and it's for the people. It is not for the people on the dais. They're supposed to listen and help out, but this is to give the people a voice and that's what this whole country's about. Give the people a voice. And Mayor Gloria Garcia, I'm proud of what kind of a mayor you've been in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Raoul Rodriguez. After Raoul will be Ruth Cordova.
Uh, Mayor, before you start my time, I'd just like to say that the remarks I'm gonna make are gonna offend some people and if they're out of order, I would be happy for you to eject them from the meeting. Thank you. Two meetings ago, someone by the name of Valentin Godina, he tried to steal one of my signs. This individual is running for city council. What kind of a person would do that? Apparently he doesn't have any morals or any values. I consider him a thief, a criminal and a lawbreaker. There was witnesses that saw him do this. I'm speaking to the people of Victorville out there that are watching this at home. Do not vote for this individual. He is just like Blanca Gomez, another criminal, another lawbreaker and probably another thief. So please do not vote for these individuals. And also I'm asking you to take the time to sign the petition to recall Blanca Gomez. She is a disgrace to Victorville, a disgrace to the American people. She does not respect this flag. She does not respect America the way she should. This is a wonderful country. Be proud of America. This is a country where people can speak like, like what I'm saying. She should resign. Blanca, please resign because you are gonna be recalled. So resign now because you need to go back and do whatever you were doing before this. So I'm asking you voters to sign the petition to recall Blanca and do not vote for the individual by the name of Valentin Godina. This is who this individual is. Please do not vote for him. He is a thief, a criminal and a lawbreaker. God bless America. God bless Donald Trump and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
As a point of order, I'd like to put on the record that his time was not started as soon as he was there. That we'll, we'll be paying attention to the next people.
Ruth Cordova.
Madam Mayor, Mayor pro tempore, city council members and command staff. I will make a short, I do plead, I plead, that you bring, um, on the agenda SB 54 again. Prop 4757, AB 109, Governor Brown now removing the no bail. Arizona's prisons are overcrowded. People are coming here and we have huge concerns with respect to our safety. Now, um, the gentleman before was speaking about the elections. Here I'd like to reveal, and I don't need to recite, that as a city council member, we are held to a very high standard with great moral character and values. The people of the state of California versus Jose Godina, AKA Godina Valentin, also known Case number Frank Victor 1502572, Superior Court, Criminal Courts, Victorville. 136 PC felony. Prevent, dissuade, witness, victim from reporting. Next charge allegations, serious felony, that was an enhancement, 273.6 PC. Violate court order to prevent domestic violence. 166 PC contempt of court violent, violent, violate protective order. So, uh, here if he's gonna violate the protective order, he's gonna violate the United States Constitution. 646.9 felony. Disposition, felony stalking, convicted, sentenced on the other charges, former probation, served 364 days in San Bernardino County facility. Felony stalking, felony probation, served three years. State prison, Chino State Prison, two years. Custody status, case custody, in custody, bail set 125,000. Criminal protective order was filed for the victim. Court orders defendant to be certified to Superior Court, Puswan 859. Defendant waives time for sentencing. Defendant requests immediate sentencing.
You have thirty seconds.
Petition to revoke, revoke, um, probation. There was an abstract filed, um, the AKA used as Jose Godina. He used a fictitious, a address which came back to 14740 Mesa in Victorville. That address comes back to Valentin Godina, 14740 Mesa, Victorville, on record. I plead that SB 54 come back on to the agenda for the safety of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, El Cotillo.
I don't even know what you're talking about. Anyway.
You have your three minutes.
You guys are pulling a scam on these people in the city of Victorville by letting them people, we paid taxes on that golf course for years and years, our taxes and your taxes. Now you're saying to hell with all the taxes we paid. You can't take care of the golf course no more, but you're willing to pay over $2 million to let the people from Apple Valley drive through the city of Victorville to get to the freeway? How is that fair to us? What goodness it do us to let them drive through our city? We got enough traffic here already. You guys don't know what the hell you're doing. You shouldn't be up there. This is what I think about all of you.
Thank you very much. I can only say I'm responsible for my children till they become adults. After they become adults, I don't think anybody is responsible for what an adult does. Saying that, all of this reminds me of my school years when there was always cowards egging other people on to fight. The individuals never knew why they were fighting. They were just always egged on to fight. Those cowards became political agitators and that, that's all they are, dividing our community and dividing us. I have spoken with just about every person up here in private and we've had very good conversations and I don't think that I've had any misfeelings with anybody here. I think our council needs to, uh, reexamine themselves and try to figure out why they have separate issues when they shouldn't. You are our leaders. You were voted in with the trust of the, of the citizens to do the job of our, of our community. Our community has demonstrated that they can come together and build a park at the family center. If our community can, can do that without our leaders, our leaders are much better than that in our eyes and we hope they can find a way to resolve these issues and stop allowing these coward political agitators to come in and disrupt our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, um, all the cards that I had. Uh, so now we move on to a report from our city manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of items. Uh, one particular I want to give attention to is regarding what we see in the field of municipal clerks, uh, throughout the state of California. And, um, in the field of serving as municipal city clerks, there's a highly sought-after credential. Uh- And it carries the acronym of CMC, which stands for California Municipal Clerk. And to get this certification, this designation, there's a fairly rigorous program. It's a program supported by the City Clerks Association of California in conjunction with the University of California, Riverside. 120 hours of time is spent studying all of the facets of what goes into serving a municipal city clerk. And I'm pleased, I'm proud. And I wanted to recognize that our city clerk, Charlene Robinson, has graduated from that program just last week. So I wanted to take this time to recognize her and congratulate her for that. Thank you for putting the time and the effort into it. Certainly advancing our credentials as employees to better serve the public is not only important to the community, but certainly important to us, leading your operation. So thank you, Charlene. Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, there is a $5 Fill a Bag with Books fundraiser at the Victorville City Library. It's put on by Friends of the Victorville City Library, which is a nonprofit organization. It's gonna be an event that has special events promoting video game rentals and so forth. Information, you can contact the city library. Stop the Bleed Workshop is another, we have another workshop Wednesday, September 26, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Here, Victorville City Hall, Conference Room D. Enrollment is open to the entire Victor Valley ages 18 and older. Information can be found on our website. That's all I have.
Thank you. Now we move on to E3, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda. Let's see, I'll start with Ms. Gomez.
So the first, all of these are motions. The first one is Discussion and Possible Action Of Building a Steering Committee of Community Members and Stakeholders To Engage the Community in the Importance of the 2020 Census Count.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
The second one is Discussion of Appropriations of Money To Increment the Efforts to Bringing Light to the Importance of Filling Out And Being Engaged in that 2020 Census.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Next one is To Add to the Agenda Discussion and Possible Action To Discuss How the City of Victorville Is and Will Prepare For Natural Disasters and Manmade Disasters. How Will We Be Prepared the Next Emergency That the City Has? And What Are the Plans or the MOUs That We Have With the County, Other Cities, And Our Public Safety Officers? To Bring Trust and Security to Our At-Large Communities?
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Next one is Discussion of the City Manager's Use of Discretion Based on His Partisan and Open Desire to Single One Council Member Out From the Rest of the Council And the Municipal Code's Power to Supercede His Personal Discretion That Is Harming the Use of Public Resources in an Imprudent Manner. And that's my motion to add to the agenda immediately.
Can I hear that one again so I could understand?
Basically, I'm asking for the city manager for us to evaluate him. There's a lot of concerns that have been brought up that are in paper. That's basically the nutshell of it.
Well, we have a valuation process. It's a closed session process. We don't put it on the agenda.
You do. We have to ask.
What?
We have to ask to evaluate the city manager.
It's built into his contract.
Or any employee.
What?
Or any employee that we want to discuss. City manager, city attorney.
We don't discuss employees. The only person who deals with us is the city manager. And we evaluate him once a year.
Or not, or ignore it. I've asked for it. If you want, I can repeat myself. But you can either second it or ignore it.
And what you're asking for.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I was essentially asking. There's a lot of issues with the city manager with me trying to represent the city of Victorville and not getting the information required by inquiring from city staff based on municipal code. So I wanted to address those issues.
I thought that's what you asked for, you know? And I wouldn't mind having that on the agenda. That's not a city manager evaluation. That's a discussion about your problem dealing with the city of Victorville.
No, that's not what I asked. You can reinterpret, but it's my turn right now. That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking for the evaluation of the city manager. If you want to make a motion and do it about me, you will have your turn. I'm not here to argue with what your opinions are.
I just wanted to understand what you were asking for.
Okay, so that's still on the table.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Then the next one is Actions of the City Council To Be Put On for Discussion and Possible Action To Rectify Any Use of Public Fund That's Been Imprudently Used Without Disclosure of an Agenda to the General Public. That's what we did on Friday. We didn't disclose it. We didn't have a meeting. We didn't approve it. But yeah, we're gonna do arrears and pay for the behaviors That Mayor Garcia Has Been Doing Outside of Her Duties. That's what I'm asking to be put on the agenda.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Mr. Fuentes, which I requested not only by email, I have phone call from him. And I requested publicly as a point of privilege to please read out his concerns, which would not read, were not read and were not respected. I'd like to add his concerns for the lack of cleanliness of six visible chairs That he had spoken about, so all of you should be familiar at city staff level. The city of Victorville has a preschool program charging $50 a month for Mondays and Wednesday course. Mr. Fuentes, a fee-paying member of our community and resident, Has a young toddler who attends these classes weekly. In my phone conversation with Mr. Fuentes, I found out, and I quote, "No one gets near the chairs and instead leans on the wall or sits on the ground," unquote. My question to the city administration is, Who's in charge of the cleanliness of the area, the lobby and the main hook, center, street park, Including the stained furniture? Is it, is it in the budget to clean these seats? And the resident was told that we don't clean anything unless it's every six months And we don't have it in our budget. So as courtesy for this gentleman who had reached out to all council members, With no exception of any one of us, Is to add this to the agenda so we have, we can have a discussion And see if these chairs are going to be cleansed. Are we gonna reappropriate monies or not? And this is not my concern, like I said, this is this gentleman who reached out to all of us here.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
I'd like to place on the agenda a discussion with Brian Gangler about the Green Tree Extension, Since the city manager has denied my email request To sit and meet with the city engineer to inquire about last agenda's meeting.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
I would like to sit and have an appointment to discuss with Scott Webb Questions About the Caper, since he canceled, Since he canceled the last two, well, this is he, meaning referring to the city manager, Cancelled the last two meetings in a row. Will be denying the third meeting on a Monday, so I will not be meeting with the city manager. And I'd like to have my questions answered to be able to be productive And make decisions based on city resources that are either appropriate or not appropriate. And this is what I would like to add to the agenda.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
I'd like the city council to continue its pattern of chastising in public Any council member in the body of the city of Victorville That does not represent the actions of the city of Victorville, But their own actions in public. A written declaration to distance ourselves From any actions that have been caused severance and any emotional distress, Along with annoyance and power of abuse under the title of mayor. I make the motion to continue with the upkeep of uniformity. No one at this dais is above any constitutional, administrative, Common, international, or statutory law.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Friday, this, Friday, the attorney without a vote of the council or the public comment Represented the mayor with, this is, this is what I'm gonna add. So hopefully you guys understand it. There was financial resources. I don't want the city taxpayers to go back on a Friday and pay for what they didn't vote. Clearly, the body voted today. We don't have to go back retroactively and do any expenditures. And that's what I'd like to have discussion over the next couple of agendas.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Thank you. That was all.
I have a question of clerk. Mr. Fuentes has notified all individuals. I noticed when I came in today, I think I have somewhere around 100 emails That I haven't been able to answer or look at. But I don't recall receiving anything from him.
There was an email, and there's also a response from staff.
There was a response from staff to him?
Yes.
So it's been answered?
Yes.
When the staff responds to individuals and the email is directed to the council, Could we have a copy, or could I have a copy of that?
I'll give all council a copy.
Thank you.
Then we move on to reports from council members through a minute limit.
I do. I attended the League of California Cities Annual Convention in Long Beach. And one of the items that, one of the discussions that I attended Was the cannabis study, where we heard from the cannabis people at the state. And it is far from settled. The rules are far from settled. They're changing them weekly. They are being amended consistently. Bills are put in, they're, they're, they're being, I forget what they call it, But they're, they're not getting off the desk. They're not getting out of committee. And so most of the cities That are dealing with the issue are simply taking the, taking the stance That we have to wait and see what the state is going to do because it's in flux. One city reported that It had put $9 million in the bank in cash. It was reported that that was an illegal activity. And the answer was banks are happy to have cash And they're happy to give it to them in a suitcase. That's, that was a little different. I don't know how they intend to settle it. But there's all kinds of items that are not settled. And kind of the promise that came out of that was that the state has now recognized That this is not going to produce the funds that they thought it was gonna produce. Part of their effort, they hoped, would be to get rid of the illicit and underground activities, Which is not working because of the amount of taxes that they're putting on the legal sales, Which is having little or no effect on the underground activities. And the legislature is least looking at, here to be looking at A law that just says, allow it and take the control away from the city. But as of right now, it's still a raging controversy and it has not been resolved. The last thing I want to add is I answer a lot of emails. And I, I, I hear criticism that we're not responding. As I said, I was gone three day for a meeting, and I come back and I have 100 emails. But I'll answer them. And I think that everyone deserves to have an answer Because we have statements that are made here, such as we need to change the form of government. In 2016, when, when Ms. Gomez was elected, One item that the city council had on the election Was to change the charter to allow elections by district.
You have 30 seconds?
And the voters in this city turned it down. This council must abide by what the voter said. And they said, no, we want to continue As a charter city with election at large, and we cannot arbitrarily change that. I want people to understand that. The other thing is, I teach public administration. I taught public administration. I've never heard of a city electing a city manager, ever. So please call me, 760-954-7677. I'd be more than happy to discover the, to talk about the forms of government. Because a lot of what is being said is just simply uninformed, I guess. Thank you.
I think I heard tonight the most racist comment I have ever heard In the eight years I've been on this council. Mark that we are now 54% Hispanic. We're taking over. I, I'm a product of the 60s. The whole civil rights movement in the 50s and 60s, I grew up with. I've opposed racism all my life. I'm offended by it in any form. I don't care what form it comes like. But that comment presumes That every person of Hispanic origin thinks the same way And has the same values, the same political views. That's as ignorant and foolish a statement As if I were to sit here and say every white person thinks the same Or every black person thinks the same. Here's two white people, might as well be on different planets, okay? I'm really deeply troubled by anybody who would come before this council And make the kind of statement you made. I'm deeply offended by that. You are, and with help from Ms. Gomez, You're attempting to create a racial divide in this city. You're attempting to turn people against one another based on their race. Shame on you. I want no part of that. You ought to be ashamed of yourself for spewing that kind of poison.
No, I still have my three minutes. Mr. Kennedy, antagonizing the public as a council member, shame on you. I attended the Naleo Education Fund for National Policy Institute On Emergency Preparedness and Resource Management. It's a two-day convening which allowed me and other Latino policymakers To enhance their knowledge and understanding of disaster planning and preparedness. I joined the National Association of Latino-Elected and Appointed Officials Educational Fund in Miami for the National Policy Institute On Emergency Preparedness in Response, in Medical, in Response Management From September 14th to September 15th this year. The convening provided me and more than 50 Latino community and municipal officials, Higher Education Trustees, and School Board members from across, across the country With the opportunity to enhance our knowledge and understanding Of the different levels of planning and preparedness Needed to help our communities prepare for, protect against, mitigate, Respect, respond to, and recover for various types of disasters and emergencies. Understanding how national politics plays into the role of local elected officials Is essential to serving a population of constituents In an eagle's focus view, a proactive approach, And a retrospect from hindsight to work for a better future. I said this part. Convening to meet with the urgent needs like shelter, water, safety, food, And critical services is an immediate concern of all responders. During the institute, I and other Latino policymakers Were brought together with leading experts from the public, private, and nonprofit sectors Of two days of professional development that combine classroom and experiential learning. Topics that we addressed at the convening, at the convening included The 2017 disasters, the impact on communities and lessons learned, Mass evacuation, how a well-coordinated plan saves lives, Emergency planning and preparedness for healthcare facilities, The aftermath, recovery, resiliency, and rebuilding, Hazard mitigation planning, a look at land use planning And best practices for improving emergency plans and preparedness. You can view the full agenda for more information And the convening, which is available at the Naleo Education Fund website At naleo.org/2018. I, on many occasions today, try to put on the agenda The importance of being capacity building and mitigating any human disaster.
You have 30 seconds?
Or any disaster that would come that's naturally, naturally in its base. Clearly, we saw today that no one seconded on many occasional issues That are so important to our nation. I'm not talking about just the city of Victorville. I was with over 50, there is, we were with people from Puerto Rico, People from Miami, people from Louisiana, you name it. We were coming together as elected officials to learn what it is to do preparedness for our communities.
Time is up? I just want to thank everyone that believes that I'm doing a good job here. And And I'm doing it because I care about Victorville and I care about the people. All people. I'm not dividing anybody, and you know that. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.